All right, I apologize for the tardiness. I'm gonna call the July 12, 2022 regular meeting of the Auburn Planning Board to order. We are going to start with a roll call, starting on my far left.
Darren Finnegan.
Brian Dubois.
Paul Jacques.
Matthew Duval.
Evan Seer.
Tony Ferraro.
Riley Bergeron.
And absent tonight are Josh Daigle and Stacy LeBlanc. Stacy LeBlanc is a regular member. When a regular member is absent, we elevate an associate member to act as a full acting regular member. So tonight, we will be elevating Mr. Paul Jacques. That means that Mr. Paul Jacques will be acting as a full member. That means he can act on motions, make motions, take votes, as well as participate in debate. So, tonight, we have no minutes to... No, we do. We have the minutes of the special session of June 21st, as well as June 28th, to approve. Is there...
So, I wonder, does anybody think it's worth clarifying on page four? Who made the motion that actually passed?
Of which meeting?
Sorry, the first one, the 21st. Halfway down the page. It's what we discussed at the meeting on the 28th.
We are talking about the specific... Evan Seer makes a motion to recommend to the City Council to not?
Yes.
No, I agree. I think that should be amended to say that Matthew Duval made a motion. What was your specific motion at that point?
Yeah, I think this was my motion, although the parenthetical things are added for clarity, and I'm fine for that, with that. I don't know who seconded it. I just don't recall that.
Does staff recall that Mr. Duval made the original motion that was seconded and then amended?
I can go... I can look it up to make sure. I wrote it... I wrote all of it down as it read up... Or as it showed on YouTube.
Does the... Do members of the planning board feel confident saying that we would approve the minutes with a staff review to amend the motion made on page four to reflect the actual motion and amendment made? Okay. You're okay with that?
Yep.
Any other clarifications?
Right below that, they spelled Dubois wrong.
Yes, they spelled Dubios. Brian Dubios. So, near the bottom of page four, that needs to be amended to D-U-B...
O-I-S.
O-I-S, as opposed to O-I-U-S.
And capital B.
Any other amendments?
I just have a question about, in general, when referring names, there's... What's the consistent... Is it full name? Is it Mr., Ms., Miz? Is it first-name basis? I just think it should be consistent.
So, in the past, we have given deference to staff. And in looking through past minutes, that is a question I've had myself. It can be somewhat confusing, because sometimes they will refer to a person's first and last name, and sometimes a Mr. or Mrs.'s. We do not have a consistent policy, so I think with regard to tonight, we should probably not make amendments with regard to that. But if that's something that we want to see in the future, we should discuss that.
Okay. I just think it would be consistent... The consistency throughout the sets of minutes would be...
Yeah, I think that full names is probably the most appropriate thing, so we know exactly who... Which person it is, if you have the same name, or something like that.
That doesn't require a formal vote.
Yeah.
It's on the record right now. As the Chair, I will ask that, in the future, city staff utilize full names during the minutes. So, problem solved.
I make a motion to approve the June 21st, 2022 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. All those in favor? How about a motion to approve the June 28th, 2022 minutes?
So, on page three of the June 28 minutes, top, the vote says, "Vote, motion passes 7-1-0," and it was actually 6-1-0. We only have seven voting members.
Good catch. Does staff see that? Any other amendments of those minutes?
I would also... Maybe this is just stylistic, but I think it goes to clarity, because other people read these. Halfway down, it says, on that same page, page three, "Matthew Duval makes a secondary amendment to add the words," and I would just put, in quotations, "as part of the aforementioned offset improvements," end quotation, seconded by Evan Seer.
Accepted? Any other amendments? Is there a motion to accept as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. All those in favor? And the meeting minutes are accepted. Item three, we have a public hearing for the Auburn Center Street LLC. It's proposing a 5,000-square-foot, convenient MD medical office building located at 600 Center Street, identified as parcel ID 291-001, including the creation of an out parcel. This property currently owned by Shaw's Realty Corp. is in the general business, or GB, zone. The proposal is pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 12, and Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 2, 3, and 4. The way we run our public meetings is that we will hear from the staff and their report. The planning board will ask questions of staff. When we are satisfied, we will ask the representative of the applicant, or the applicant themselves, to come forward and answer questions, or add additional information they believe is pertinent. After that, the staff... The planning board may choose to ask the applicant or their agent questions. When we are satisfied, we will open the public input section of the hearing. We will listen to public input. When public input is complete, we will close the public input section of the hearing, and we will debate and make final decision. So, having said that, is staff ready to present?
Yes, we are.
Excellent, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, like you said, this proposal is for a 5,000-square-foot, convenient MD medical office building at 600 Center Street, at parcel ID 291-001, including the creation of an out parcel. The property is currently owned by Shaw's Realty. It shares a lot with the Shaw's Shopping Center on Center Street. I can imagine people can picture where that is, but I can always bring it up on a map, too. It's in the general business zone, and tonight, I will be reviewing this next to, like you said, Article 16, Division 2, which is site plan review. I'm also going to be looking at it next to Article 16, Division 3, special exception, and also, Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 4, which is subdivision ordinance, and also, I will be looking at it next to the general business district requirements. So, we are going to start with the beginning here. So, first, we looked at it for site plan review, which... And in this area, actually, I'm gonna just pull up a map, because that's a better way Okay, there we go. So, this building, like I said, is currently occupied by... It's a... It's right now a parking lot. The parcel is set to be at the... Kind of where the accessway meets Center Street. If you can... Here's a good example of where it's gonna be sitting on the parcel. So, here's the Shaw's building, existing parking lot. They will... The extent of their work will be this building, this parking lot here. This will be an area that they own. They have leased this parking lot. And they will also be including some kind of... Some improvements to the site, which I think are pretty notable. So, one thing to look at is convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site, and in relation to adjacent areas. Something that, through some conversation, we decided on with the applicant, is that they will be adding 300 feet of new sidewalk, which is pretty substantial, and that is... That really loops in with the comprehensive plans' goal of making this area more walkable, and adding sidewalk and accessibility transportation measures, one site at a time, as we go. They also agreed to install wayfinding signs in this area, so... And as well as a yield... A yield sign, I think, right over here. No, actually, right here, as you come into the... As you come into the site, as well as this painted stop bar. So, they will also be making... So, those improvements will actually result in a net reduction of impervious area. They will be with the landscaping that they have. So... And this use also is in general business, and it is used for that purpose, and it also aligns with the comprehensive plan, which is to keep this area for these kinds of uses. It's surrounded by general business. It's, I believe, and I think all of staff believes, is a really appropriate use for the spot, which would otherwise be mostly empty parking lot. Right now, for waste disposal, there is... And stormwater, they... There's no state or stormwater site law permits required, but there are two existing... There are two existing catch basins, and the applicant plans to keep or slightly modify those, and tie them in with two additional catch basins. They are also planning on... They're gonna connect to municipal water, municipal sewer, other utilities, including gas, electric, and cable, as well as onsite solid waste. They are going to service that and maintain that privately. See? So, something that we did do in the process of going through this project is we are... One of the goals of the comprehensive plan is to reduce the number of curb cuts, to increase, or just to improve that over time. It really didn't make sense with this project. We found to completely eliminate this one. So, instead, what the applicant has done is, they actually just shifted down... So, this is a slip lane here that exists, and it goes right, right only out onto Center Street. And originally, we were thinking maybe getting rid of this slip lane, but that wasn't going to work ultimately with the site, and the way it currently works and serves Shaw's Plaza, and also the ATM. So, what you can see here is, they moved down. They're proposing to move the slip lane to be more adjacent to the street, to allow for an easier... An easier site distance to the left, as you're pulling out, and also, and this whole area here, that you can see... I think you can see it in green. Yep. That is going to be new landscaping in green area. So, that is all I have for now, and I welcome any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Duval?
Sidewalks. You referred to 300 feet of sidewalks. I don't see them in the plan, but I'm sure you can give us an idea of where those would be located.
Yep, I actually have a little... We have a sketch here. It's... This is just a sketch. I'm going to flip it around.
I saw this handout, but I don't know if I quite understood where the sidewalk is.
Yeah, so actually, as it stands, there's kind of a... There's a sidewalk that crosses... There's a sidewalk that crosses the street here, and it really just dead-ends. There is no... It doesn't go to anywhere. It just stops on a little... On a platform, essentially. And so, what they're going to do is, after moving this down, relining the slip lane, they're going to install 300 feet of new sidewalk to city engineering standards. And you can see that will wrap... If you can kind of follow my mouse, it's gonna wrap down here and up through this way, to eventually probably connect to a longer sidewalk that will cross over to, I think, Turner Street is probably where that would go. There's no plans to do that, to clarify, but project by project, we intend to connect the sidewalk rid.
I guess, just to add a little bit to that, the thought process for staff was to make sure that we get... We have safe egress from essentially the crosswalk that's existing, that dead-ends, and then going across the other slip lane, the right-hand slip lane that brings you inside of the development. So, essentially, that there. So, and then that sidewalk will essentially just end. There's plans, again, to make additional improvements that will tie in to additional recreational facilities that, again, I think the comp plan talks about that, and the city is working on that, to expand on the ice rink arena area and create some connectivity there. Again, this is creating sidewalks, opportunities to later... At a later date, to be able to connect to those, to make some connectivity. I think that's gonna be an effort that we have continually. And to go on to that other slip lane coming in on the Center Street, the other part of that, too, is that the way the slip lane is now, based on the exist... The angle, you're really looking over your shoulder, and it's really difficult to get a good site distance. So, by changing this angle, you really see... You're able to come on to the roadway a little bit more square, and you can see the... Your site distance. You've got 350 feet there of site distance, and you've got the additional... We've created some additional stacking area for that light area. So, I think a lot of times, people are looking backwards, and vehicles are moving forward, and they're stacking, and there's small impacts in that area. Not saying big impacts that will create, like, an HCL that'll come up on a DOT list, but more of like... More of love taps, where they're looking back, and they move forward, and they just... They hit the person in front of them, because they're turning their head significantly. So, in terms of improvement for this project, this is a significant improvement. I can say that some of this negotiation happens very quickly in front of the planning board. You know, one item I do see there is that we're going through the trash receptacle. As we can see, we're moving that. I think that's a discussion with the developer that's here. Where they plan on moving that? I think that's a question. And maybe that staff recommends lot number two. It's number two there. It's identified. That may be a good place, but I think that's up for negotiation, but that could be a condition of identifying where that's gonna go, and making sure that it has the same provisions as it is now with, you know, fencing around it and guarding around it. So, that's the only pieces that I have. And again, the... We met with Shaw's, the actual owner, and they are very adamant about their existing clients that are their key bank in utilizing and keeping that access available to them. So, closing that slip lane was not really an option for them. That would really have... Unfortunately, would have potentially killed the project. So, I think this was a good compromise by the city staff. I think they did an outstanding job, and I think that we got a lot of good, positive things from this. So, that's all I have.
I have two questions. One, and that's not a particularly major question, but I was on the board when we approved the double ice arena. Sidewalks were part of that. What's the proximity between where this sidewalk will end and that sidewalk? Do we have just an estimation? I don't need exact feet.
Yeah, it's like 600 feet along the other building on the...
Okay.
Probably where the Shaw's Plaza is, about 600 feet.
And can you please explain the issue with the trash receptacles? You're saying that there needs to be a discussion about where they would be placed? You're discussing them being placed on...
Yeah, so the new slip lane goes right through the middle of that. So, we didn't get... Because these discussions happen so quickly at the end here before planning board, and we didn't get that vetted by the developer. But I think that that's something that we, as the board, we could address, so...
So, as the board, we could address. I think it's most helpful when we address something if we begin with a staff recommendation, even if we deviate from that recommendation? Because it starts...
Yep.
It helps to give us a starting point?
So, again, staff recommends parking lot number two, where it's identified as number But I think we're open to discussion with the developer on what makes sense for them and their operations.
And I assume being placed on parking lot number two would include screening?
That's correct.
Yep. Yeah, and I forgot to add... Sorry about that. That our... That we suggest that this be approved with the conditions that we move and adjust alignment of the slip lane to maximize site distance to the greatest extent possible, and increase the distance between curb cuts and driveways to the greatest extent possible. Two, install 300, approximately, feet of new sidewalk lining where Center Street meets the accessway to the parcel. Install a new yield sign, and install and delineate wayfinding signs. And we can add to that move from the configuration.
A receptacle, a trash receptacle, be placed on parking lot number two with screening?
Right.
Okay. Additional questions from the board?
Yes, please. So, that green space is going to be converted to landscape area? And by landscape area, we don't mean the green painted pavement that I think exists there now, right?
I don't think so.
Okay. My real question is, once the landscaping is in, they're responsible for maintaining it? Is that right?
That's correct. As long as it's on their property, they're required. So, there'll be some adjustments there. Obviously, we've gotta tie in a sidewalk in there. There'll be some landscaping. There'll be some additional small vetting out with the city engineering staff. Typically, we have a bonding requirement. I don't know if we made this a condition of the approval, because there wasn't a lot of infrastructure here, but there could be... We certainly want to have that discussion with city engineering and laying that out.
So, a landscaping plan does not currently exist?
No.
Okay, so it would be reasonable for the planning board to add an additional condition that a landscaping plan be approved by city staff?
Sure.
Yep.
I have a question about just... So, we're... This new change eliminates four parking spaces, as far as I can tell? Is there a problem? Like...
So, the city ordinance doesn't require any specific amount of parking in the commercial areas, so we have been... I know Catherine and I have been to the site multiple times. There's a lot of space available in that location, so I think that what they have is adequate.
Yeah, and also, I'll note that all of the spaces that are used for the shopping center can also be used for this establishment, too.
I have a question about that trash. So, I feel like it's really far away from there. What is actually... Obviously, it's a medical place, so there'll have needles and things like that. Is that actually going that kind of trash? Or, I guess I'm just confused on, like, why it's so far away, and how are you gonna keep people who would like medical paraphernalia out of there?
I think that's a good question. I think we'd want to bring up the consultant, the owner of the operation on that, to answer that question. That's a great question.
All right, we'll definitely ask that again, once the applicant is up. Good question. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none at this point, the planning board would invite the applicant or agent acting for the applicant to come forward, ask any questions they believe we've asked, and add additional information they believe would be pertinent to the discussion.
Thank you, members of the board, staff. My name is Michael Kaufman. I am the applicant for this project. With me tonight is David Sanderson from Convenient MD, and Phil Henry from Civil Design Group, and my civil engineer. I'll try to answer what questions I can, and defer to those who could answer them better if I can't.
So, I guess the primary question so far is about the trash receptacle. The trash receptacle would be fairly distant from the building with regard to what we're usually seeing. There was a question about this being a medical facility, and issues regarding biologicals having to travel across the parking lot to make it to the trash facility.
If you want more detail than I'm able to provide, David could certainly provide it, but the general answer is all medical waste is handled inside the building and picked up by a professional group that's tasked with doing nothing but handling medical waste. The dumpster area is made for just pure trash.
Okay.
So, it's safe to say that no medical waste is making it in that exterior dumpster?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the reason it's so far from the building? The reason?
To preserve the most convenient parking area spaces for customers.
What about people working? And what time do they close?
Typical hours, eight to eight.
It's just pretty late? It gets dark in the winter, far?
I understand your concern. There's several examples of these facilities where the dumpster enclosure is, if not equidistant, then much further away. Brunswick, Maine, as an example. The dumpster enclosure is all the way on the other side of the parking lot, and I don't think Convenient MD generates a tremendous amount of trash. What'd you say, Dave? One truck? One bag of that.
So, I just drove through Augusta. I have a daughter who plays softball. She had a tournament, completely unrelated to this public hearing. Her team came in second, although they were expected to come in last, so I was quite proud.
Congratulations.
I did drive by a Convenient MD facility in Augusta. Could you speak to the proximity of their trash facilities as compared to this, since there was a question?
Unfortunately, I'm not... I wasn't the developer of that location, and so I'm not familiar with the site plan.
Good evening. Dave Sanderson from Convenient MD. Apologize if I'm drawing a blank on that one. I can't relate. I think it may be a little bit closer, but it's not dramatically closer. I'm not trying to be evasive by answering that.
I ask because I recall in driving by that it seemed to actually be... In Auburn, we are used to the trash facilities being quite adjacent, and I remember seeing the trash facility quite far away, actually, at that facility. So, I was wondering if you could speak to that. So, sort of trying to not justify your case, but further the idea that this is not uncommon for your practice.
It's a fine balance. Obviously, our safety of employees is always utmost, but we need to make sure our patients can safely get into the building.
And the majority of your refuse, we know that you're gonna have medical refuse, which needs to be addressed differently. And the, the majority of your refuse, we know that you're going to have medical refuse, which needs to be addressed differently. We're hearing that that's going to be addressed in-house within the building.
Yes, the third-party vendor, yes.
I know that you, you threw out a number from your seat. However, we record these meetings for public records. So would you be willing to go on the public record and describe sort of the normal volume of, of trash or refuse that you would expect going to that lot number two from a facility like this?
Yeah, I'm being told it's, we're a very light trash generator outside of the medical waste. And it's maybe one 13-gallon bag per day.
Okay, thank you.
Very light.
Additional questions? All right, at this time, I am going to open the public hearing unless you have additional comments yet.
Just a thought, a comment, as you're pleased, as you're drafting the condition for the dumpster location. I'd like an opportunity to have, to be able to talk to staff about where that will eventually go. So I'm not 100% sure that we want to put it where the number two is. There may be a better spot that preserves all the parking that showed on this plan. So I just, again, please don't pigeonhole us into those two spots with your decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your request. At this point, I'm going to open the public input section of the hearing. The public input section of the hearing is conducted as follows. We're going to ask you to please come forward, state your name and address. If you're speaking on behalf of someone else, to please let us know that you are doing so before you speak. We're going to ask that people limit their comments to five minutes. Generally, we ask that people only speak once during each public input section of the, of a hearing, unless the planning board decides otherwise. It is our general policy not to answer questions or specific questions during public input. However, note that members of the planning board will be taking note of questions raised by the public, and we will try our best to answer those questions during deliberation. Occasionally, we will stop and ask clarification of members of the public. As the chair, I will keep time at the five minutes, and I will make sure to stop time so that I am not taking time away from you when we are asking for clarification. And also additionally, we may stop and ask staff for clarification. Again, I will stop time so that that is not counted against you. So at this point, I would seek a motion to open the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor? The public input section of the hearing is open. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this topic?
My name is Pam Russo. I just am throwing this out there. We're trying to, I know with the comp plan, you want to make things more accessible to more people. We already have St. Mary's Urgent Care very close nearby. So I'm wondering why that location was picked when it would, might be better served into another location would be easier for people to access in other parts of the city.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all those in favor? So during public input, the primary question we have, and I, I hope I phrase it correctly, is essentially about density, which was regarding to why would we want such a close density with regard to the St. Mary's Urgent Care, which is perhaps maybe 1,000 or less feet up the road?
And, and to piggyback off that, if I may, is the CMMC one across the street still?
No, it is not.
Okay.
So our, our ordinance doesn't, doesn't look at adjacency of other facilities per se. This is kind of a, you know, a business, kind of a business proposition. And they, you know, what's best suited for them in terms of visibility and accessibility? And what, what is available for, to develop? I think this is probably where the, where they landed as their best location in terms of, of visibility. I think that's the reason why they landed at that location. But I can tell you that, you know, staff doesn't look at other facilities. It's not in the ordinance. There is, there is a lot of provisions in, in the ordinance that does give distance to other types of businesses. For example, daycares, we looked at that today. And then recreational marijuana facilities or dispensaries. Again, those have distances among others. But there's nothing in the ordinance specifically about, about a facility such as this, which is essentially a, you know, kind of a urgent care medical facility. And it's, there's no, there's nothing in the ordinance.
Okay, so is it safe to say that the planning board, in understanding this concept, should recognize that Convenient MD, as a private developer of this project, is assuming the risk for being within proximity to a pre-existing urgent care facility?
Correct.
And that in doing so, they have determined that this still meets their metrics for providing care at the, at the location?
I believe so.
Okay. Are there additional questions from the planning board? Before I ask for a motion, we have discussed the concept of a trash receptacle being placed on parking lot number two with screening. The applicant has asked that we not hedge them in. However, I think that is imperative of the planning board to set a specific parameter. And if we believe that parking lot number two is where this should exist, then we should include that as a condition. If we believe that it does not need to exist there and it should exist somewhere else, then we should, we should do that as well. But then we should not leave that as an ambiguous question. So before we enter into any motion-making, I'd like a discussion about the placing of receptacle, of the trash receptacle.
So can I just clarify? You're stating that we should identify an area for trash?
I think that we either need to, we either need to identify a very specific area or we need to make it very clear to staff that they have leeway to place a receptacle, but we should also give them directive as to where we want that placed. So it may not be appropriate to say we create a condition that staff places the receptacle wherever. That it should be in proximity to the building or that there should be some defining language.
I, I would feel very comfortable in deferring to staff's judgments. You know, they're both entities, staff and the business have common goals. You know, they don't want it in front of their door. I think they'd want it in a place that would be suitable for utilizing the trash receptacle without disrupting traffic flow and things. So it's, I don't see any major obstacle in, in having staff and the, the business iron that out.
In, in general, I would agree. However, we have heard some concerns from members of the board that the placement and the proximity may present problems. So if members of the board feel that proximity is an issue, however, that we feel the staff should be able to work with the applicant, then we should make that clear that we, we wish that the receptacle be placed within a, a particular proximity. However, within that proximity, staff and the applicant can work together to, to place that receptacle, to, to, to address that concern.
So it would be something like, so what I hear you suggesting is wording that says no further from the building than, you know, the current, than parking lot two, or something like that?
I have no suggestion. The concern was not mine, but I'm trying to make sure that.
That I'm heard.
That, that, that we are hearing the concerns that are made. So, so to that point, I, I would actually defer to.
Yeah, I would just, I guess I'm just, go ahead, do you want to talk?
Yes, please, come forward.
Hi, good evening. For the record, my name is Phil Henry with Civil Design Group. We're the engineers on the project. So I think, I think here are the options in terms of the dumpster, maybe we can talk through that. So I agree with you. Typically, when we can put the dumpster next to the building, we certainly do. There are some site constraints with respect to north-south on the page here. So starting from Center Street, there's a 25-foot setback, which this building is roughly 32 feet because there's a pretty good grade change between the building and Center Street. And then this is a, this is an existing driveway, so we're restricted for a lot of days. So as you can see, there's, there's really no room to put this dumpster here, and this is the front door. So during the original plan, we showed it where it's shown right there. Through, through our, our discussions about moving this exit lane, we presented this layout with the intention.
Oh, excuse me, I apologize. We, we've got our, we've got our, our tech personnel with their mic, yes, thank you.
We intended to, to, to place the dumpster, just shifting it over right here. However, we heard through, through further discussions that parking space two. And, and just to clarify, this two means that there's two parking spaces in this drive aisle, not lot two. It's, there's two spaces.
We understand, yeah.
So, so the options are, we put it here and lose these two spaces. You know, the, the seventh space and then this unmarked space. Or we put it here, or we were just talking internally about maybe putting it here so that, so that trucks can access it. This is going to be a dumpster that a truck is going to pull headfirst in and lift it over. So we need to make sure that there's, there's maneuverability to, to do so. So which is why this dumpster is here lined up with this drive aisle. So this would also work here. Here, it would have to be at, at an angle, and it would be blocking this, this drive aisle here. One, one other option is, is putting it here facing this way so that this whole drive aisle can be accessed. So I think those are the three options. I think, and I think our preference, based on what we've heard tonight, would, would be here. But we realize that it is, it is, it is furthest from the building. But I just wanted to state that I think, looking at it without redesigning everything, those are the logical three areas.
So you had raised the additional concern. How do you feel about, so either at parking lot identified as number two, which are those two spaces, on the raised island behind those, or in the proximity of the parking spot labeled as number seven? How do you feel about those?
I do think, I'm just trying to think of lighting, too. I mean, it is a pretty lit-up parking lot. I just feel like most, I mean, I am a woman, obviously, and there are a lot of women nurses typically. It just makes me nervous, I, you know, to walk out into a parking lot. You know, some people don't necessarily know what's in those bags and, you know, just, I, I do prefer lot seven, if that's what we're going to call it at this point.
Yeah, no, I would tend to agree. I think, I think with, with regard to sightline for the employees coming out the, the entrance, it, it's the, the straightest shot across the, the least number of intersections, so. Lot number two actually represents, if you look at this, crossing one, two, three, depending on how you want to define it, possibly four lanes, so.
Looks to be about 60 feet, is that right?
Staff, from the front door to lot seven?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, lot two, or what we're calling lot two.
From, from, from here to here?
Yeah.
It's probably 100 feet.
100 feet, okay.
Other, other questions around that, discussion? I think Ms. Ferrara brings up a, an important point regarding who the staff will likely be with regard to having to truck themselves across this parking lot. I, I think that makes sense. Thank you very much. Other questions, discussion? I will take the liberty of saying that it seems that no one is in opposition to the trash receptacle being placed within proximity to lot, to parking lot number seven as defined on the, the site plan. So at this point, I would seek a motion to approve the 5,000 plus or minus square foot Convenient MD Medical Office Building located at 600 Center Street, identified as parcel ID 291-001, including the creation of a new 13,700 plus or minus L parcel with 100-foot of road frontage on Center Street within the existing 15.71 approximate acre lot with the following conditions, that they move and adjust the alignment of the slip lane to maximize site distance to the greatest extent possible and increase the distance between curb cuts and driveways to the greatest extent possible. They install a 3,000 plus or minus foot.
100.
300.
Foot of new sidewalk lining where Center Street meets the accessway to the parcel that they install, yield sign is defined on the site plan that they install and determine and delineate wayfinding signs and travel lanes to the south outlet as defined on the site plan. That the trash receptacle be placed within proximity to lot number seven in the parking lot to include screening. And that there be a landscaping plan approved by staff.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, just to. Should we, sorry, should we be clear that it's not labeled number seven on the site plan? There's a seven in the parking spot, there's not parking spot number seven?
It is not parking lot number seven, it's simply labeled as number seven with on the.
On site plan, page five.
What?
On the page five site plan.
Yes, so, so noted that it's labeled as parking lot number seven on page five within the, the, the site plan that's presented to staff, I mean, to the planning board. Good catch. Further discussion?
You said 3,000, I think you meant 300 for the sidewalk.
I apologize if I said 3,000, I did mean 300 plus or minus feet. 3,000 would be awesome, but we can only, only ask for so much. Any other discussion? Thank you for the clarification. Seeing no discussion, I'll take a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And for clarification, for those members of the planning board and the public that are present, normally, the chair doesn't ask for a specific motion. However, that one seemed quite clear-cut. So I took mercy on my planning board members and instead of asking them to craft a specific motion, I, I worded it and asked for a motion therefore, so.
I appreciate it.
Same.
Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing, Hyde Park, Maine. I'm assuming this is a one. LLC Five Guys is proposing a pickup window at their existing building located at 223 Center Street, excuse me, parcel ID number 261-019, and is in the general business district. The project was originally approved on February 2nd, 2022. This request is pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 12, Section 60-499B, eight, and Division 2 and 3 of Article 16. We will conduct this public hearing in the same manner as the last, is staff ready for their presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Stony Brook Land Use Incorporated, on behalf of Hyde Park, Maine, I, LLC Hyde Park, is applying for a site plan special exception under Section 60-499B and eight for the construction of a pickup window to the existing 2,310, existing square foot, five.
existing square-foot Five Guys dine-in restaurant. Complement their business model and for a more evolved curbside platform to their customers for safety and well-being of their employees. So essentially, this could be staff-approved, and then what happened was they wanted the pickup. But the pickups, it's not a typical drive-through restaurant that we would normally see, like a McDonald's. And I'm going to go through that a little bit. It's a lot less intense in terms of traffic numbers. I think so. I think it makes it relatively straightforward for the board, but I'm going to walk through this. The staff has reviewed and approved the proposed improvements, again, to the structure as mentioned on February 2nd, 2022. The project scope included a conversion of a bank to a 21-seat sit-down Five Guys restaurant. Changes included elimination of a bank drive-through canopy. So there was some traffic movement numbers there that they get credit for. We took that in consideration when we approved this project. And then they also made some interior and exterior upgrades to the proposed building, known as 223 Center Street. And then it was shown on the city GIS system as parcel ID 261-019. The applicant has, they had provided acceptable responses on January 31st of 2022. And then we, again, they completed the building. They do have a certificate of occupancy. It was included in your packet, and that was granted on June 3rd, 2022. So this has been an operating restaurant since that time. The project includes a total of 15,600 square feet of impervious area. Stormwater treatment to the area is not required because there's only 200 square feet of additional impervious area. This impervious area was created before stormwater law was enacted in 95, so therefore, the accumulation doesn't create an amendment to the stormwater law. Engineering had reviewed the design layout and finds them acceptable. The applicant has included a traffic assessment, more than one, actually. The proposed generation estimates dated on January 3rd and again on July 6th. Staff had a substantial amount of back-and-forth with the client on this. And because if we use the ITE manual, really, it really only gives you the option of a typical drive-through, like a McDonald's. And those, those numbers are over the 100 peak hour and would have kicked them into a traffic movement permit.
I apologize for interrupting staff at this point, but I think there's a pertinent question. What was at this location previous, immediately previous to Five Guys?
Insurance. Insurance agency.
And prior to that?
Bank.
The bank.
And prior to that? But there was something else there. The idea being, with the exception of the insurance agency, the two previous uses included, not a drive-through per se, but a model in which people stopped in quickly, picked things up, and then left.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear.
Yep.
So that way, I just want to make clear that while you're discussing this with regard to traffic patterns, that we're not discussing a fundamentally different use for this parcel than it has been used for in the past.
Right. Again, traffic assessment was submitted on the 3rd and then again on the 6th. With the, the 6th is the more pertinent information, and that data included a similar project where they have in Warwick, Rhode Island. And the demonstration of this project is that they're not going to exceed the peak hour limit established in the traffic movement permit of 100 peak hour trips. The supplemental traffic assessment provided a review of sales information at peak uses during Friday and Saturday, respectively. And the traffic engineer estimates that the project will generate 50 a.m. trips and 72 p.m. peak hour trips, therefore not requiring any off-site or site improvements related to the traffic and pedestrian movement. The existing parking lot improvements show a total of 18 spaces and 180 a parking space, which was, again, previously approved. And just to kind of walk through the drive-up window process so you kind of understand it a little bit more, why these numbers are so much lower, as provided in the Warwick example, Rhode Island. The Five Guys is really considered a gourmet fast-food market. They're not proposing to operate a, they are proposing to operate a mobile pickup window, which alternatively means product distribution. This is not a traditional drive-through as there's no opportunity to order or pay for their products built in the physical infrastructure on the site. There's no order board with speaker, and there's no money exchange in this process. All ordering must be executed off-site or onsite via mobile desktop or web, website, or app. Once the order is placed, the customer receives a confirmation of the receipt of the order and instructions are through text messaging. Depending on the location of the customer, the system can proactively guide them to a parking spot to avoid their premature arrival at the window. The system is a GPS-driven geo-fencing software called Flyby, which informs employees of the customer's location. If the customer is 20 miles away, they essentially, they automatically hold the product ticket until they are within seven minutes. Once the customer arrives on the site, the GPS track and guides them either to proceed to the window, or food is ready, or a designated parking spot as their order is being completed. This is a state-of-the-art interactivity of GPS system was specifically designed not to just reduce stacking, but to eliminate any stacking of any kind. So this is, this is a very unique situation. We had some discussion earlier with the board if this should come to the board or not come to the board. And we got, we did get some guidance. Once they put the window in, it met the definition, so here we are today. We're not, staff's not suggesting that, you know, essentially the site's been approved. So we're recommending that the planning board review and discuss the project. Staff recommends the planning board find that the proposed pickup window at the existing building located at 223 Center Street site plan for the proposed development meets the requirements pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 5, Division 12, Section 60-499B and 8, Division 2 and 3 in Article 16, Article of Section 60-1277, and further that the application meets the requirements of special exception law, Section 60-1336, and approve the project application. Staff has no, no conditions of approval on this. We're not recommending anything additional. The site, as you would go there today, would essentially remain the same other than the fact that they're going to open up the window and proceed with this new, this new ordering system.
So the window pre-existed Five Guys?
Correct.
So that takeout window already existed, as I pointed out earlier. Am I correct in understanding that this is in front of the planning board essentially because our ordinance has not been able to keep up with the technology available for such restaurants?
Yeah. I think this is, quite frankly, I think this is fascinating. And this is a great example of how to do things better and more efficiently and safer. I, you know, I went to the site three times. We had, we had substantial discussions about closing that in and then, you know, worrying about vehicles stacking up one side by side. But there really is no opportunity for that. The way that this system works systematically, it really organizes the client before they, the customer rather, or the client, however you want to call them, before they get there. So I just think it's, they have designated parking spots. It's on the site plan in your packet. And it seems, it seems like it should work, and apparently it's working in other locations. And I think we're going to be the first in Maine, considering that this is Warwick, Rhode Island, for the example. So it's good to be ahead of the curve when it comes to, you know, new development in the city.
Yeah, no, as I understand it, we will be the first Five Guys in Maine to have this capability. But more to the point, this is bigger than Five Guys. We will be the first municipality, town or city in the state of Maine to wrestle with this concept of a window that is driven by modern technology rather than a billboard sign on which you call in when you show up. So I think this is kind of exciting. Are there any questions for staff?
I have one. I am also really impressed with the technology and kind of looking forward to see how that really plays out. That being said, we also have the human element of people making the food. And, you know, as long as things go to plan, this should be great. If they don't go to plan, human error, short staff, whatever the case may be, then maybe this doesn't go quite to plan. I'm not sure. Sounds pretty foolproof, and I'm no traffic expert. But as I look at the spots for the mobile pickups, if you look at the map, if you'd be so kind, coming in Cross Street, if you hit that first entrance, which is what the sign indicates, then you hit a wait-to-confirm-that-order-is-ready sign. And then you kind of take a right turn towards those spots. Again, I'm not a traffic expert, but it would seem to me that you're waiting and reading a sign amongst the most sought-after parking spaces, where people are coming and going while you're trying to read a sign or what have you. My thought, and again, it comes with zero credibility. My thought is you might want to hit the second entryway, check your order in a less-traveled spot, and have more of a straight shot at your waiting space if you, if the timing doesn't work out.
So saying at the second curb cut on Cross Street?
Correct.
Or perhaps on that island between the first and second curb cut? There's a walkway, but we'll see, the first and second vehicular curb cut?
I'm not sure. I understand the second driveway.
Uh, one second. This is a pedestrian, this is a pedestrian curb cut? And you're saying that you feel it should be, it would be better located between the first and second vehicular curb cut? Perhaps, possibly on this island?
No, no. Scrap the pedestrian. I'm not, I'm talking about drive, automobile traffic.
Right.
You're going to go skip the first driveway and go to the second driveway?
Right.
And where?
And so the sign to remind you to check your mobile order would be somewhere in that lane.
Within this lane here, perhaps?
Yeah, get up, Brian.
Yeah, why don't you?
Because I understand what you're saying.
Because I would like to hear what you're saying, so why don't you?
It makes sense.
Brian, I'm going to pass the mic off to you.
My point is this, is you're coming in here. The door is here. We've got walkers. We've got people backing in, backing out. And this is where you're inviting the traffic based on this sign, if I interpret this correctly. If I'm a mobile order customer, I come, I know my order is probably ready, but rather than looking for this wait-to-confirm-ready sign, I might see a wait-to-confirm-ready sign here. I'm away from all of this. If I have to wait, I pull into my spots, but I'm not congesting anything in here
Yeah.
for my, my day, my diners, indoor diners. Again, I'm not a traffic expert, but just looking at this, that would seem to, I'd want to get the traffic away from this.
So if we were going to describe that position, that is, let me look at my...
So while you think about this, can I actually suggest that this is an "and"? And the reason is, is that the human condition is such that people are going to turn into the first driveway. That ju, you know, they're not always going to, they're not always going to go where you want them to. So if we're not, move signs, let's actually just add a sign. That would be my suggestion.
I don't know. I think, I think if people consistently are used to the sign being on the outer side, that is where it will go. I think you are right. Your first inclination will be pull in the first curb cut. However...
Think of BJ's Gas Line right now.
Could, could we describe, okay, so I'm trying to think of a way that we could describe that. If you wanted to put that as a condition, would you describe that as along the...
Northern?
Along the, a sign within proximity to the northeastern curb cut? Understanding that north essentially is this way and east is that way on this map, not exactly, but... Because it will need to be, if that is something that you wish to include, you will need to be able to describe it. So just think about that.
Yeah, because it does, you're absolutely right. Like that sign, even if you're, I know right where it is. So like, once you're hit that sign, then you kind of have to backtrack to go into those parking spot. That's all. You know what I mean? And they're not angled either. It's just kind of...
So that issue is, other questions for staff? I'm going to, I'm not cutting it off. We're going to talk about this more.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure if we have questions for staff, if they're asked.
Oh, I have one, like, just statement. I'm, I am for this little window. But having, let me look at this. It's kind of funny that you're monitoring traffic on July 6th. Like Auburn is empty, and so I feel like maybe next time that it shouldn't be on like a holiday week.
That's, that's when the submission packet was in. That's the date when it was in. Not the date that we actually physically went out there.
Oh, okay, because I was like, that traffic count on July 6th would not be...
Yeah.
Well, and again, I'm going to point out that this has had several uses. The driveway, the drive-through window was pre-existing, which would indicate that...
And I'm into it. I'm not.
This already existed on the site, so... Other questions?
It's not so much a question as, I think this is a good, the technology described here is going to be really useful and efficient. But the first couple of weeks, people are going to hear drive-through, and there's going to pull up, and it is going to be congested, because I don't think they'll know until they get there. Probably just at one time at a stake, because once you get the technology, you recognize that's not how it works. But I think initially, there will be a bit of a traffic buildup.
Oh, how will they get the technology out to people?
I think that's something that we could, we could certainly ask the consultant that's here, and then maybe in addition to that, address some of these traffic questions.
I suspect that if you want your Five Guys burger, you will choose to figure it out.
No, I agree. I'm just curious, because it is so new. I just am curious how it's going to happen.
Like, I would have fallen victim to pulling up and then having to pull out my phone and download the app or whatever the first time. So I just think that my, I don't know that I'd be alone in that.
I can say that they had, that was a, that was a concern that staff had the first time when they opened up, because it, I don't know if you remember with Chipotle, when that opened, it created a big issue. So they did have, and the consultant can speak about this as well, and he's, he's here. But they did have someone available to guide traffic during those opening times. So that, that could be, again, a condition when they, when this window opens, we could have a condition of the approval to essentially have traffic available or police available to generate, to deal with additional traffic that's not, what's not, was, would be considered not normal business.
Additional questions? Seeing none at this point, we'll invite the applicant or agent for the applicant to come forward. You know, please identify yourself and answer any questions and add pertinent information.
Good evening. My name is Mike Gatto. Stony Brook, here to represent the project. First, I'll apologize for speaking up earlier when it was in public session. I've been at this for a lot of years, and this building was built in 1973. And one of my class projects when I was at the tech school was to go over and measure this building up. So I kind of knew the history of the building there, so I know that was built in 1973. I also know, having done this for many years, that every time I do a project, I learn something new. Every time. And in this case, as one, someone said over here... as when someone said over here that they're not a traffic engineer, neither am I. I've solved a lot of traffic issues in my career, but I'm not a traffic engineer. Five Guys has these drive-throughs throughout the East Coast, throughout the country. They know the technology. They know how it works. And if it works correctly, the minute somebody enters the site, their phone's gonna ding, and it's gonna tell them, go to the window, go to park. So, you know, that system, the minute you make that order and you put that app in, your phone knows where you are, and it's gonna track your phone. It's gonna submit the order to the chef, to the cook that are there. Everything's done automatically, and the minute you hit the site, the boundary of the site, it's gonna say, find parking space three, and they'll notify them when their order's ready, or if their order isn't ready, it's gonna say, go directly to the window. Average time for a vehicle at the window, 14 seconds. This is very different than any drive-throughs that I've ever been involved with, uh, in my career. Dunkin' is starting with their mobile app. That mobile app works similarly. They track you from where you're, where you're making the order, and they, they have the order ready, and you drive to the window, you pick it up, you don't pay, and off you go. Uh, so the technology is getting better and better. Five Guys, um, people that I'm working for, one of the franchise, they have to get Five Guys national approval for the layout. Five Guys national approval laid this out with the signs where they are. The sign is for potentially the guy that doesn't look at his phone for some reason, but everybody's using their phones these days, and a lot of them go through your phone, your, uh, your radio when it pops up. I would hope that you would allow it to go as is, um, but again, it's your, it's your board, it's, it's what you want, uh, and it's up to you folks. But the key that I, I wanted to say tonight is that we already have an approval for this building. We actually submitted a traffic study in January, March, and then an update in July based on sales data. The data shows the system will work. Uh, it was traced for two months during July and Aug, uh, June and July in Rhode Island, in an existing facility.
Mr. Gatto, I, I apologize. I, I wanna stop right there. Uh, is the system that we're discussing with regard to picking up the window essentially the same system we're using with regard to picking up in the store now? Let, let me rephrase that question. There was some noise.
I, I believe that, um, they are using curbside now.
Right, right. So, so my question being, uh, they utilize a curbside app. Uh, I've been to a Five Guys, I've not, I apologize, been to the one in Auburn yet. I will say my hail marys later, uh, but, uh, um, having been to a Five Guys and ordered, uh, there's a system. I've ordered, I pull in, I know when my order is ready, and I've physically walked in the building to get it and come out. Are we essentially talking that same system, only now this app is going to tell me, instead of having to walk in the building, you are free to drive through the, the window?
I think it's very similar, but it's evolved from going in the building to get it, to employees bringing it out curbside.
Okay.
At the parking spaces, to, it's now involved to, you can bypass those parking spaces, and it's gonna tell you when you drive on site, go to the window, your order's ready.
Okay.
So, I, I'm this kinda guy, and so I just downloaded the app, and, um, yeah, it wants to know. It, the first question it asks when you bring it up is enable location, so that it knows where you are.
Yep. Tracks you within 20 miles of the store.
So there's things now of like Grubhub, Uber Eats, things like that. So what if I'm ordering food there, but maybe Grubhub is actually picking it up?
As long as they have the order information, uh, there is a connection. Uh, having looked at all the sales data, Grubhub, all of those people are on the sales data, here's how they're picking up. Maybe they go into the store and pick up the order, I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah.
Okay, but all those things are dealt with.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so if it was on my phone, yes, they could track me, but if I'm ordering and Grubhub's picking it up...
I believe you're gonna find this pickup window works for the person ordering.
Right.
You know, based on your phone. So if Grubhub picks it up, they're gonna stop in the parking lot, pick the order up and go.
Right. Or in the parking lot.
Yep.
Thank you. So I apologize for interrupting.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I wanna answer the questions, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. But I, I guess I wanted to say, so this, this pickup window is not going to increase traffic at the site. That's what all the data is telling us. So we have the traffic there today, it's gonna be there tomorrow. Um, so I, there's no reason to use traffic as not to approve the project. It's an evolved curbside pickup system that's, that's come up. Uh, you can't take orders, you can't take money. You have to order board you. They'll tell you to go, go off-site. Um, uh, it's more a convenience for the customers, so that they can order, drive by, and go home, eat the, eat the meal. It's safer for the employees, cause they now don't have to traverse the parking lot to deliver it to the car. Um, so there will be no vehicle stacking, and backups are limited to 14 seconds. So, I mean, uh, the carriage pickups are, are 14 seconds about, uh, average, average. So we have done, like I said, three traffic studies and everything with staff's at questions and stuff, going back and forth. I think I've learned a lot of this mobile concept, and I think it's gonna be, you're gonna see it in a lot of places, uh, as it goes forward, and as it gets better used. And as the Five Guys of the world, the corporate people, get their franchisees up to speed to get the systems to work. And again, they have these things all over the East Coast. Um, so with that, I can answer questions or let you open it to the public, however you wanna go.
Questions? All right, thank you very much. Uh, seeing none, um, before we open up the public comment, we will utilize the same rules as the previous public hearing. Uh, we will ask that people speak only once during, uh, the public input section of this hearing. Uh, we will ask that people limit their comments to five minutes. Uh, if you are speaking on behalf of someone other than yourself, please, uh, state that. We will not directly answer questions, but we will write them down and make sure that we try to answer those during deliberation. We may ask, stop, uh, time and ask for clarification. And we would ask that when you begin speaking, you, uh, start by stating your name and address. So having stated that, is there a motion to open the public input section of the hearing?
So moved.
Is a motion?
Second.
A second. All those in favor? The public input section of the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor? Right, we'll now enter into deliberation. Are there any additional questions that people would like answered, or points that they would like to make?
I made the point about the traffic, but I don't feel qualified to have that be a, um, something that is a barrier for us approving the project tonight.
Well, I think that, that's one of those things where, um, it is certainly, um, it is certainly within our purview to change the site plan, um, to address that concern. I will put in my two cents in saying that, uh, this is a fairly new technology with regard to the city and in fact, to the state. Um, my personal preference would be to allow Five Guys to operate as designed, so that way we can use them as a case study. My assumption being that we are going to see more of this coming before us. And that having something as designed by the applicant, uh, might provide us some learn, some, uh, learning opportunities as we look at, at some of these projects as they come towards us in the future.
I'm inclined to agree with that.
Discussion? Seeing no more discussion, someone is, would, would you like to make a motion? Would you like to make?
I would like to make a motion. I make a motion to approve the proposed pickup window at the existing building located at 223 Center Street. Site plan for the proposed development meets the requirements pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 12, Section 60 dash 499B8, and Division 2 and 3 of Article 16, Section 60 dash 1277, and further that the application meets the requirements of special exception law, Section 60 dash 1336, with no conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item five on the agenda is a public hearing for Kitty Hawk Property Development LLC, who requests an extension for the commercial subdivision, Auburn Commerce Center, consisting of three lots totaling approximately 30 acres and a 680-foot street, excuse me, from Herrmann Drive into the parcel located on Kitty Hawk Avenue, parcel ID 108 dash 001, in the general business zoning district. The project was originally approved on April 13th, 2021. This request is pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 2, Section 60 dash 1308. I think for the purposes of the board, understand the project is less important than understanding the specifics as to why are they asking for a, an extension?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so this project, um, I'm pulling up the map, that which was not included in the, it was not included in your staff reports, because it's, was already an approved project with a number of, a number of conditions. Um, April of 2021 is when it was originally approved. The project is a, um, is a, a three-lot subdivision with the possibility of further subdividing it more. Um, the manager of Kitty Hawk Property Development, um, who is the applicant for this project, um, has submitted a request for an extension, um, because one of the, one of the tenants, um, for one of the divisions of this three-division lot, um, has backed out of their, of their project. So they, um, in the timeframe, have been unable to, um, proceed with the development. Um, they are requesting a one-year extension. They made this request in writing. Um, the, the date of the letter is June 8th, 2022. Um, the requirement of the ordinance is that a single, one-year extension may be given upon a showing of good cause in writing by the applicant to the planning board, not less than 30 days before the expiration of approval, um, of his existing plan. So, um, that is... So, and we believe a staff that it is good cause. They have not been able to, the tenant, um, was not able to proceed with their development, but the applicant is, um, is intensively looking for a new tenant to fill the spot in hopes of continuing this project. Um, and the motion is that, um, the motion that we suggest is that, um, the planning board approve a one-year extension under Section 601308 for the construction of a commercial subdivision, um, with the following, with the following language. And, um, we also suggest as a, as a, a condition that the applicant must send the plan to, to the city engineer prior to beginning construction, especially if it is, um, a new tenant.
Questions for staff? Questions for staff? Uh, seeing none, we have no applicant, um, although perhaps the applicant is here. I don't see the applicant or representative. Um, seeing neither, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Uh, we will, the public input section of the hearing, we will conduct the public input section in accordance with the, uh, description that I gave earlier. Is there a motion to open the public input section of the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor? We are now in the public input section of the hearing. Is there anyone that would like to discuss this topic for the public? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Uh, the public input section of the hearing is now closed. We are moved on to deliberation and final decision. Are there any questions, further questions, comments, uh, for members of the board? Seeing none, I would, uh, either seek a motion, or I can, uh, read and have one.
I'll, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve a one-year extension for approval under Section 60 dash 1308 for the construction of a commercial subdivision, the Auburn Commerce Center, consisting of three lots totaling approximately 30 acres and a 680-foot street, uh, from Herrmann Drive to the parcel located on Kitty Hawk Avenue, parcel ID 108 dash 001, in the general business district, uh, with the following condition. Applicant must send the plan to the city engineer prior to the beginning, right, prior to beginning construction.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any deliberation or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Project is approved. Next on our agenda, we have item number six, a workshop. An update on lot analysis regarding changing the rural residential zone to low-density country residential zone within the Lake Auburn watershed. Um, and I, I apologize, uh, normally I would've had a, a pre-meeting with staff. I did not have one this week. I think the primary questions that the planning board, uh, will be interested in asking, uh, will be tied to our direction, uh, to staff earlier, which is, which was, what is the impact of reducing the density on the, um, housing development within the watershed? So, having said that, uh, please make sure you answer that question. Is staff ready to present?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, there is a executive summary in your packet as well as a staff report. Um, I'm not, this is essentially a workshop. I'm not gonna take any time to read that. Uh, we have our astute, uh, intern here, Evan Ma, who's been working with us this summer, uh, from Bates College. Um, really happy that he's here with us and part of our team, and I think he's gonna be the one that's gonna present tonight, uh, with, uh, with some of the data that he's crunched. Um, and, uh, I'm just excited to, to show this stuff to you guys and let him, let him take the, take the road from here.
Thank you, John. Um, so today we're discussing the proposed rezoning of the area currently zoned as rural residential within the Lake Auburn watershed to become low-density country residential. The proposed change is tied up with the proposed subsurface wastewater changes that were discussed in April, but it's important to think about them both together and separately. And it's important to note that the goal of both proposed changes is to prevent water quality decline in Lake Auburn from phosphorus inputs, um, but each will do so in different ways. Um, so before getting into the zoning change, it's important to understand the proposed septic change that was introduced in April. Uh, so the proposed update to the subsurface wastewater disposal system standards is intended to improve the efficiency of the existing systems within the Auburn portion of the Lake Auburn watershed. This was based on a recommendation from the 2021 FB Environmental Report. The potential change being considered would improve septic systems as they are replaced, but would also relax the soil requirements needed for a new system, meaning more residences and septic systems could potentially be built within the watershed. The construction of new residences means that more than, means more than just new septic systems. Uh, it could harm water quality through increased deforestation, soil erosion, impervious surface, and land-based runoff, all of which increase the phosphorus loading into the lake. Therefore, in order to protect water quality, it's essential to prevent additional phosphorus loading wherever possible. While the city has ordinances that attempt to mitigate these, such as the phosphorus control ordinance, limiting density would offset the consequence of these new residences more outright and aligns with the comprehensive plan. So in an attempt to do this, it's been proposed to rezone the area known as... So in an attempt to do this, it's been proposed to rezone the area known as rural residential just within the watershed to become low-density country residential, which has more stringent requirements for building a residence. And this is a, this is a map of the proposed area. So everything that you see in green would become low-density country residential after the zoning change and was formerly rural residential.
So may I please ask a, maybe, maybe it's an obvious question. So we're, we're proposing that all those areas in green go from, say, allowing one home per acre to allowing one home per three acres?
Yes. And there's also an increase in required road frontage from two hundred fifty feet to three hundred twenty-five feet.
Okay, so we're, so we're, we're not just saying the number of houses per acre, we're requiring a larger road frontage as well?
Yes. So the two thousand twenty-one FB Environmental Report had set a goal of nine hundred kilograms per year of phosphorus loading into the lake. They also cite seventy-five percent forest cover as a key environmental threshold for the lake. Current loading is higher than nine hundred, and we are currently around seventy-five percent forest cover, if not just below that, which indicates that we need to both reduce our phosphorus load and also be able to stay there. So here's a few things to consider as we work towards that goal. And this is a non-exhaustive list of, of things to consider. Impervious surface, which is roads and driveways, is a land use type that is known to contribute large amounts of phosphorus because it is impenetrable. We already have sources such as Route Four, but preventing new impervious surface will prevent more phosphorus from entering the lake. Also, with each new residence, there's an effect larger than just a new septic system. Even though the city has ordinances that aim to mitigate these, such as phosphorus control, reducing density would prevent some of these outright. Minimum lot size requirements work well alongside zoning changes to accomplish this type of thing. The other thing is that lakes in Maine, such as China Lake, have seen declines in water quality due to farming. And so a possible consideration would be to modify the agriculture and resource protection zone within the Lake Auburn watershed overlay district to prevent new agriculture, which would stop phosphorus loading both from the agriculture itself, but the land use change from forested area to tilled land. And this could be known as a resource protection zone or a watershed protection zone. And it might be also important to, if this would be a consideration, to have caveats thinking about how climate change affects food security, maybe allowing with special approval to have new farms, just in case the future is uncertain.
A question for you. I don't know if I heard you correctly. Talking about forest land to tilled land?
Yes.
And that benefits us how?
I'm sorry, it does not benefit the lake. So when you have forested land, the, the roots kind of keep the soil in place.
Right.
And so when, when rain comes, it doesn't really get washed off as much. So when you convert that to tilled land, the water can run off much faster. So if you prevented the addition of new agriculture, you would prevent deforestation from occurring in that area, and therefore the resource protection would keep all the forested area that's in that zone and hopefully would work towards the goal of maintaining seventy-five percent forested area.
Great, thank you. Again, to kind of reiterate that a little bit, in my, before I got to the city of Auburn, I worked for Kennebec Water District, so, and we were, as a consultant, and then we did the ten-year watershed-based plan for them. That's public water supply for Waterville, Winslow, and North Vassarboro and some of the communities up that way. And if we look at non-point source pollution as what's the number one contributor to non-point source pollution, it's, it's essentially ag use. So high-use ag, like a dairy farm or something like that, can surpass any amount of homes substantially. We have that ability to do that right now. We have the ability to put ag zone, ag farms out there in the watershed. If we talk about direct impacts, if we ask the consultant, if FB Environmental, what's the number one thing that, that you can think of in terms of nutrient load into the lake, phosphorus and nitrogen specifically, they would say over and over again, it's farming, right? So the NRCS, the Natural Resources Conservation Service, has a whole book of best management practices that minimize impacts to watersheds. They have, and they're found in, in a lot of the communities in Maine. But I think this is our best opportunity to really, if we look at a holistic approach, knowing that we, we may change the septic ordinance, we look at, and Evan's going to cover this wonderfully today in terms of what the impacts of the zoning change are, but this recommendation about going to resource protection zone or watershed protection zone is, is a really, a good step forward into the longevity of pushing that filtration waiver, keeping it there, keeping it in place, keeping the filtration waiver there, and pushing that, that time limit. We all know that eutrophication is going to happen over time in a lake. I mean, maybe two hundred years from now, but things just go, move and move and move. Maybe someday we'll need a treatment plan, but we want to push that away. We want our communities to be able to better plan for it. And I think that this is a good, a good, a good avenue for discussion. Sorry.
And to actually just build on what John just said, the proposed zoning change is only in the area zoned as rural residential, but the proposed septic ordinance change would affect the entire watershed. So that's another way to kind of cover more areas than just the one that's being discussed today. So what is at stake here? The filtration waiver is a, probably the most important thing to consider. It allows us to provide water to citizens of Lewiston and Auburn without a filtration plant, and its construction could cost millions of dollars and also raise the prices of water bills throughout the city. The taste and odor of drinking water is also extremely important, as well as the natural beauty of the lake. So the proposed zoning change seeks to rezone the land on approximately two hundred ninety-nine parcels from rural residential to low-density country residential. The parameters for building a residence in LDCR are much more stringent than in rural res, and so it will cause all subsequent development to occur at a lower density. These are just the, the building requirements, so you can see the one acre to three acres minimum lot size and the two hundred fifty feet to three hundred and twenty-five feet of road frontage. So in order to project how many additional structures could be put in, in this area, I did what was called a build-out analysis. And a build-out is essentially a map-based analysis of potential, which does not reflect the intentions of landowners. And it's, every build-out is based on a certain set of assumptions, and so it's important to understand those implications when understanding the, the data. So there were two build-outs used here. The first one assumes that no new roads will be built in the watershed, and the second one will assume that new roads will be built to allow for maximum development. So the first one also accounts for the position of existing buildings on the parcel and excludes commercial and industrial land uses. The new roads build-out does not account for the position of existing structures, and also conservation land is not considered, it's assumed to be protected indefinitely from development.
Evan, may I please ask a question?
Of course.
When you say that you do not account for current structures, is it safe to say that by that you mean you assume that the current structure could be completely bulldozed and would not stay, and that the site could be reconfigured to maximize development?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And so then, the next important consideration is how the current septic standard was accounted for. A lot of build-outs, especially those that use models and technology, will be able to extract soil data from the NRCS or other sources. Since this build-out was performed by hand at the parcel level, it was, the septic standard was accounted for using on-file applications and permits for subsurface wastewater systems, which will have interesting effects on the data presented because not all applications and permits that actually were issued are on-file.
Does that mean that these numbers are overestimates or underestimates?
So it depends on the graph, but I'll make sure to explain that with each one.
Thank you very much.
So this graph here that you're seeing is an estimate of what is currently developable, developable under current zoning and under the current septic ordinance. So that's estimated to be forty-one possible new structures, assuming no new roads are built. And if you're assuming new roads are built, that number is one hundred. And these are both overestimates of, of what it could actually be with the assumptions that were presented here because of the use of the on-file soil tests.
And so this is current conditions. This is to say, if we make absolutely no changes?
Yep.
And we leave everything as is, this is what we would project?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And can you clarify, so if you're using incomplete data?
Yep.
That feels to me like I would get an underestimate rather than an overestimate. Can you clarify why it's an overestimate as opposed to an underestimate?
Absolutely. So the incomplete data is actually being subtracted from the total because the current septic ordinance limits development if you don't have the correct soil standards. And so when you do the build-out, you get kind of a total of what the possible development could be, and then you have to subtract off what is limited by the septic system standard. And so you're kind of underestimating what is limited by the septic standard and subtracting that from your total. So when you subtract and underestimate from the total, you'll get an overestimate.
And you're saying what you've subtracted is underestimated because you don't have a comprehensive number of permits because not all permits are on file?
Exactly. And also not all rejected applications or not all soil tests are on file.
They do not all seek a permit as well?
Exactly.
And so you did GIS analysis on this. Did you use a soil map to make, try and make more accurate estimates? So you, I mean, you can put the soil layers in there and then?
Yep. Yeah, so I did not use GIS for, for this analysis. It was done by hand. I believe that FB Environmental is actually going to be using GIS to do their own, their own analysis. So this was in, this was intended to be done by hand at the parcel level.
Okay, could it be done by GIS? I mean, it seems to me that, so, full disclosure...
I think it would require USGS satellite data versus?
No.
I...
Full disclosure, I actually used to teach GIS, so I know a lot about GIS. It's totally doable, right? This is, this is not difficult. I see Rosemary's back there shaking her head. I think we have probably all the layers. Do you have all the layers, Rosemary? Or you'd have to pull down the soil data? You have?
Do we have? So the, the layers are only as good as the data we have, so my question is, what data do we have for the soil levels? We can say that we can use GIS, but here's the deal. If, if, if I am using GIS and I am saying, I'm going to use my GS soils layer, my soils layer that I'm, my, my, the GIS level layer that I'm using is only as good as the data that I'm able to pull, so my question is, what data are we able to pull?
It's coming from the US Geological Survey.
Okay, so it is the, so exactly what I was saying, we would need the US, USGS, like, satellite data.
So specifically though, we're, if we want to talk into the, get into the weeds a little bit, it's the medium-intensity soils mapping is what we're, essentially what USGS mapping is. Unfortunately though, that does not qualify for a septic system. You've got to do an individual test. It has to be done by a licensed site evaluator onsite. So I think that the data that we have here is, is pretty representative of what's available in terms of overestimating. I think that that's a clear picture. But the, a medium-intensity soils mapping overlay on GIS is not going to give you a clear picture of what's out there. You've got to go on each site, do a soil test, report that data back if we want a true picture of the number.
Is it fair to say that if we use the GIS, well, let me pick the correct metric here, the USGS, medium soils, that we would ultimately end up with a, with an overestimation because there would be assumption that all of those soils could be utilized?
Correct.
However, the reality is they couldn't all be utilized?
That's correct.
Without individual testing of sites, okay? And I'm assuming that this is why we've gone parcel by parcel based on what we actually know versus, okay?
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I would just comment that while I agree, an "and" approach might actually be a better approach, right? You, you're, I like this approach. It's, you know, when you have data that are actually on the ground, it's the way to go, but you could probably supplement it with the GIS data to get a better understanding of what's going on.
And I think that, I think that FB Environmental will provide that information for us.
Thank you.
So this here is what we have under current zoning and under the current septic ordinance. So if you didn't change anything, that's, that's what we would have. And we'll move on to if the septic standard only was changed, so just the septic and not the zoning change. And so in the orange, you kind of have the graph that was there before, which we need to remember is an overestimate of what could potentially be there. And the blue is after, so it's after the, the proposed septic ordinance change.
Are we assuming that blue is also an overestimate or an underestimate?
That should be not over or underestimated, the after, because there's no septic taken into account there. That's assuming...
Thank you. So the, the, the blue does not require a soil testing, so you were able to go parcel by parcel?
Exactly. Or it requires you to know that it's greater than twelve inches to the limiting factor, and with all of the, the permits and the on-file soil test, they all met that requirement, the ones that were... And so the increases between the before and the after, those are going to be underestimates because we overestimated the previous graph, which seems a little bit confusing to say out loud. But the, the effect of the septic change was underestimated, and so the changes here will be underestimated. And so in the no new roads build-out, it's assumed that the amount of possible structures increases by an estimate of twenty-nine. In the new roads build-out, the estimate is fifty-seven. So in both scenarios, the septic, proposed septic change would increase the potential development within the watershed in the rural residential area.
So, and then just to clarify, so when talking about these numbers, if we just look at the no, the no roads standards, the orange bar represents, it's basically forty-one or fewer, and the blue bar, the answer is seventy or more?
Exactly.
Thank you.
So now we're going to think about the zoning change only. So if you just changed the zoning but did not change the septic ordinance, there would be a reduction in the number of possible structures by twenty-one in the no new roads scenario. In the new roads scenario, there would be a reduction by sixty-four. And actually, both the before and after are underestimates because they use the same methods to account for the septic, the septic standard change. So it should be, I'm sorry, they're overestimates, but they should be relatively comparable because they use the same methods to get to the, the answer. So now if we think about both changes occurring simultaneously, there would be a reduction in the amount of possible new structures by an estimate of three in the no new roads scenario, and in the new roads scenario, a reduction by an estimate of thirty-nine. However, it's important to understand the overestimate/underestimate thing again. And so since we are overestimating the amount in the orange column in the before, the changes would actually be underestimated. um, the changes would actually be underestimated. So um, if we actually had all soil tests, all permits and all applications on file, you would probably see um, changes closer to zero or even positive for these.
So, okay, so is it safe to say that, because people are gonna, people are gonna put their finger on a number, but really, let's talk about statistical significance. And looking at this, can I safely say that if we were to reduce the density?
Hmm.
Improve, uh, implement an updated septic, there is zero statistical change in the number of homes that can be built?
I would say relatively.
Let's, let's, let's define it as five percent. It's less than five percent. We'll say that statistically insignificant. That's pretty, it's pretty standard. Uh, however, there is a statistical significant reduction uh, if we do allow for new roads. So uh, if we say it's business as usual, by reducing the density and changing the septic standards, it's essentially a wash with regard to the number of houses that can be built. Uh, if we were to now allow new roads, it would be a reduction. Okay, just to be clear, that it's not a reduction across the board per se. It's a wash essentially statistically, or a reduction given a specific scenario in which new roads would be built. Okay, I've got a question tied to that.
Um, so then here's all of them put together in one graph so you can do a comparison across the different scenarios. Um, so, once again, it's important to recall that the, the orange and the gray are both overestimates. And um, it's important to consider that if the zoning change were to, or I'm sorry, the septic ordinance change were to occur, um, you see an increase in the amount of structures and so um, having the zoning change occur alongside it would reduce that effect pretty greatly. Um, so it's, it's important that if the septic change were to occur, that there would be an effort to limit density that occurs alongside it. So what was learned from this build out? Um, on its own, rezoning the area within the watershed known as rural residential to low-density country residential would reduce the number of potential residences in the zone greatly. Even though it's tied up in the proposed septic ordinance change, it would actually, um, it could be a potential effective solution on its own. Um, and could definitely be considered um, to be effective independently. Even if the septic ordinance change um, happens to no longer be considered, it should definitely be considered to still reduce the, the density. Um, the proposed septic standard change and zoning change would have consequences on water quality. Namely, adding new residences adds impervious surface, um, more deforestation, um, and more soil erosion, which increases the phosphorus load into the lake. Furthermore, the addition of new residences removes forest cover from the watershed, even though watershed already operates at the threshold of seventy-five percent forest cover. Um, and it's important to reiterate that this build out refers exclusively to the existing rural residential zone. And the proposed septic standard change would affect the existing AG and LDCR zones of the watershed. So in order to limit density further than what is currently possible, um, which is a goal outlined in the comprehensive plan, more steps should be taken to pre- to prevent additional phosphorus loading in order to protect water quality. And a phosphorus estimation would be necessary to truly understand the impact of any one of these changes. Uh, last, it's important to note that no single change can be a solution on its own. It is imperative to reduce the phosphorus load and future loading from as many sources as possible. Um, so implementing a variety of remedies is necessary. Um, changing the zoning from rural residential to low-density country residential is a step to limit development that the proposed septic ordinance change would allow, but should not be the only measure that's taken. Um, the last section as I wrap up is just how does this affect the people of the city of Auburn and why is it important to them? Um, preserving water quality and limiting phosphorus loading into the lake is invaluable. Um, because the filtration waiver allows the city to provide water to citizens without the need for a plant. Um, which would cost millions of dollars, um, and raise water bills throughout both cities, both Lewiston and Auburn. Um, if water quality deteriorated to the point where a violation would occur. Um, when water quality worsens, taste and odor concerns arise. And so policy decisions that seek to improve water quality would hopefully mitigate these. And also when water quality improves, property values around the lake will increase. Uh, last little bit is that preserving the natural beauty of Lake Auburn is extremely important to the people. Um, I would argue it's even a, an area of local importance. Um, and a, definitely a, an important recreational place for the people of Auburn. And so that's an important consideration to have as well.
Questions?
Yeah, just a second.
I'd like to commend him for that.
Yes.
Nice report.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sure there's a lot of work that went into that. Nice job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, I agree completely. Um, I have a question, a sort of a fundamental question that really actually doesn't relate to your work at all. Um, what you've done is shown us um, how different building scenarios affect the total number of possible buildable lots in the area, and that's great. Um, but at the top of your presentation, you have the FB Environmental recommends nine hundred kilograms of phosphorus per year. Is, you know what the area is for that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last part?
So it's nine hundred kilograms per meter, per acre, per.
Oh, sorry, um, per year.
Per year, but of what area? Like, over what area? Over the whole watershed?
For, yeah, for the entire lake.
It's, so it's just total load into the lake?
Yep.
Okay, so it recommends nine hundred and we're at one thousand one hundred and seventy-four.
Yep.
Anything we build is going to increase one thousand one hundred and seventy-four.
Yep, it'll increase from that number.
From that number, right?
Yes.
And, but we want, we don't wanna go that direction.
Right.
So this is not necessarily a question for you, because it's not the work that you did. I think it's more for staff in general and maybe for the board, but how do we think about actually what we really wanna do, which is get to nine hundred kilograms per year? I don't know how we can build to do any of this.
That's intrinsic in the septic because we know right now, we're essentially loading nutrients from effluent within septic tanks directly into the groundwater untreated, which is increasing that number.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we have to know that information, but we're not going to likely. I, I'm skep- I, I'm not gonna say, make anything definitive. I'm gonna say, I'm skeptical that if we take all the existing septic systems and fix them.
Mm-hmm.
That it will have the impact that we hope it has and gets us to nine hundred.
Yeah.
And that's why we need the modeling from FB Environmental, but even then, when you build, I would say, I would guess that a new house probably adds more phosphorus than.
But you're, you're raising this specific question is, which is, and I get this all the time. And it's incredibly difficult to have to explain this to people because they don't like the answer. Which is, why can't we just stop building in the watershed? And the answer is, it's an illegal taking and we can't do that. You lit- we literally cannot go into a residential zone and say, you can now no longer build a house there.
Yeah, no, I, I'm actually not saying that. I'm asking a philosophical question.
Yeah, no.
And, and what, I'm asking the city essentially, what is the plan?
So that's.
To reduce the phosphorus loading
Yeah.
in the lake.
And that's a great question. And that's, and really, we gotta continue to ask how are we gonna get to nine hundred, Matthew? I think you're spot on on that. And one is, we can look at what we've done already for, for the phosphorus control ordinance. Right? So we've, we've minimized the amount of impervious surface that requires treatment to occur on a site. So we went from five hundred, a five hundred and seventy-five square foot um, structure down to two hundred square feet. And anything two hundred square feet or more requires a phosphorus, a phosphorus plan. So you have a net, a net reduction in that, so.
Well, is it, is it a net reduction if you're adding impervious surface?
Not necessarily, but I guess uh, net reduction is not the uh, right term, but you have net treatment for that site. You're not supposed to export more than what was existing.
Right.
So you have to protect that area in a buffer.
Yeah, no, I totally understand that and.
Or we're implementing low-impact development techniques. I'm just saying that if we do have some development, as Evan, Evan indicated, we do, we're gonna have some development in the watershed, no matter what. We, we can all shake our heads and agree on that. What we're saying is that we're gonna make sure that there's a phosphorus control plan in place. There's additional best management practices, low-impact development techniques. We're gonna be able to conserve land for a buffer tied to the deed that has to be recorded in the registry. These are, these are some of the controls that we have in our phosphorus ordinance. Those things are gonna happen and we've strengthened that, so that's one thing we could do. And then, you know, if the city wants to take it to another level, maybe we look at existing lots. Maybe we're looking at individual lots. We do a watershed-based plan. We identify what's the most significant um, impacts to the lake. And we implement things. It could be an individual home. And that individual home may have an eroding bank or something like that, and we look at how we mitigate that. I think that those, we need to sit with the water district. This is a bigger issue. We, we need to sit with the water district. Lewiston, we need to sit with everybody and put a, a ten-year watershed-based plan. Identify what the number one, number two, number three, all the way to down to fifty of the top non-point source pollution that's existing in the watershed. That's how we get to nine hundred.
So we know what it is. It's the upper watershed. So how does this affect the upper watershed? We, we, we know, we absolutely know the largest source of phosphorus loading with the lake is naturally occurring, naturally occurring phosphorus with on the, with on the lake floor, um, and that's turned up in the spring and the fall. And the second largest loading of phosphorus within the lake is the upper watershed. That is to say, the tributaries uh, that flow into the basin and then into the lake outside of the city of Auburn. So. Does this help us?
Again, that goes to, back to the watershed-based plan. It looks at the whole watershed. We need to identify what are number one, number two, again, down to fifty, what are our biggest contributors? And how are we gonna systematically take care of, take care of those?
Okay. I, I asked you a leading question and uh, I apologize, John. That was my fault because I asked you a leading question. I expected an answer. Um, and so I will give you the answer. Uh, so let me say that I apologize for putting you in that position where I asked you a question and expect you to give a specific answer, but the answer is this, is that there are no restrictions within the upper watershed outside of the most basic restrictions required by state law. But that our current septic system standards are so arcane that they cannot be legally enforced anywhere outside of the city of Auburn. And the only way we have any hope of imposing more stringent standards within the upper watershed is adopting modern standards within the city of Auburn so that the Auburn Water District has any hope of legally, defensively pushing those standards out to the upper watershed. And I apologize for standing on a soapbox, taking your time. Um, but I think it's important for people to understand that.
I think, again, I think that that's identified in your plan. Those items that we need to address in other communities are identi- uh, identified in the plan. And we work as a community to address that with, with these other communities nearby that, that are affecting our, the public water supply. I think we have to, it's just like the comprehensive plan that we all worked on. We do it for the city. We need to do that for the watershed. Those same things that we do as a comprehensive plan needs to happen for Lake Auburn. It, that's, that's the way it's done. I, that's the way that we, we utilize and get what's called three nineteen Clean Water Act money. That's how we do it, that we can leverage monies to do additional studies, to do additional best management practices in the watershed to reduce, to get that number to nine hundred. That's, that's the only systematic path that we have. And there's a, there's a system in place that the EP, the federal EPA set and gave the guidance to the DEP, sends it down to the state to implement. Um, I think we need to be in that conversation every year and, and identifying what these, you know, during the rainiest days in the spring, uh, were run off as most significant. We need to be out in the watershed. We need to be hiring people to look at what's, what's impacting our watershed. We need to identify those.
To, to, so, but it sounds like those, there's no, there's things we can identify where it's coming from, but to answer Matt's question, there's no plan to go, to reduce those from nine hundred, to, to get to the nine hundred number by addressing those specifically. We just have to identify them and then go from there.
Correct.
Yeah, I think um, I think this can be, one way that we can see this is that we know that the current septic standards are not treating effluent um, in an effective way. We have more, we have more data now that shows that um, the more current septic standards that we've spoken about um, with the soil scientist, David Roke, who came in, um, is the most, is the, the latest science really on how to treat effluent. We also know that reducing density um, directly will link to reduction of phosphorus loading into the watershed. These are two things of many other things that um, are, that would load phosphorus. And I think as we identify them and um, and really just, we can pick them off and we can take them up possibly as individual items in the future, but we know these two things, so I think it's a good time to act on those.
Just one little point. Do we actually know that if we implement the sewage thing and decrease the den- density, that we actually will reduce the phosphorus in the lake?
No, we don't know that, but I think, I think um, the idea with the septic change was to also evaluate, um, evaluate at like, I think, a few year markers to, to see what the effect was. And I think it's a pretty good bet that if we change the septic to treat the water better and also um, mitigate what, what might be increased density by changing the zoning. I think it would be a fair assumption to say that it would be less than otherwise.
Look, the genie's out of the bottle. If we, if we had reduced this density to this, okay? Thirty years ago and updated our septic standard thirty years ago, when the original septic standard was in place, we would be in a better position than we are now, but unfortunately, the genie's out of the bottle and it's kinda like this. Okay, let's, let's talk about another environmental issue. Let's talk about, um, let's talk about uh, carbon dioxide, okay? I know I'm gonna put forty more cars on the road next year. There's, there's nothing I can do about it. It's gonna happen. Would you rather put forty new nineteen ninety-four, uh, nineteen ninety-two Ford Broncos? Or would you rather put uh, forty new two thousand twenty-three Toyota Corollas?
But.
Which ones, what, now, you, you're not gonna reduce the amount of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. It's going up. Okay? But if this, if the best we can do right now, while we are trying to figure out how to reduce pollution, is to reduce the amount of pollution that any new user enters into the system, then I think we have an imperative to do that.
I don't, I don't disagree. Uh, but in that analogy, you're saying the second biggest source is the Bronco that's driving up the street, upstream.
It, it is, it is.
So, and we can, we don't have an option to, to have them change.
We don't right, we don't right now because the regulations we have in place are legally indefensible within those municipalities because they are quite literally less ecologically sound than the state, the minimum state standards for septic systems. Um, so.
So.
So, so. Um, so, 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 we, we could implement, but we have in the upper watershed.
I just, I just don't, I think that if the, the amount of phosphorus coming from upstream is such that, and again, back to this car analogy, if we all were driving hybrids around the lake, it still wouldn't get us back to nine hundred, that number nine hundred.
Oh, here's the deal, this is not what's gonna get us to nine hundred.
I know.
What, what this is gonna do is gonna stabilize within the city of Auburn, what we're putting in our lake, and then allow us to implement the same standards in the upper watershed, so that they are no longer outpacing us as they have done for the last three decades in terms of water pollution.
Isn't the water pollution not from septic, but more from agricultural uses? That's why it's up in Turner and stuff like that, so I don't know that the se-, so if we could legally enforce our septic standards upstream, I don't know that that would get us to the nine hundred number either.
It's not just the septic standards, we can start, we, what we can start doing is density as well. So the one thing that we're not talking about is.
Also wouldn't affect agriculture, though, like.
It wouldn't necessarily affect agriculture, you're right. So, and Evan hit the nail on the head earlier in his report, when he said there is no one single piece of thing that we can do, it's really a multiple piece. We've got to stabilize what we're doing now, we've got to make it defensible, so that we can implement it in the upper watershed. We've got to look at whether or not it's really reasonable to use agricultural land to protect the lake, so that way we can develop a new zone here that can then be pushed out into the upper watershed. Um, but we've got to do, if we know that what, every time we build a new house in Auburn, we are putting in a subpar septic system that is gonna be there for the next fifteen to twenty-five years, I just feel like, I don't know, I have a hard time with that. But then I also don't feel comfortable saying we should just update the septic and allow for the rampant building that we were looking at. We need to balance that out by saying, at the very least.
There has to be.
At the very least, it needs to be balanced out, so that we're not adding additional development within the watershed.
Yeah, so I don't disagree with that. Um, what I would love to see is the city to actually develop the plan that John was talking about earlier and articulate it and have this be a piece, as you're suggesting, right? I mean, that, producing that framework and put this into a framework that is, what are the things we can do to increase the time to, to filtration for, for Lake Auburn? What are, like, let's put together that plan, that's, you know, the water district can join in. That's, that seems to me to be the piece that's missing right now.
Well, I would argue that John and his staff can't do that plan. They can present a plan within the city of Auburn, but because we know, Riley's absolutely right, agriculture is a big piece of it in the upper watershed, but it's not just agriculture. There's been a huge number of homes, single-family homes built um within the watershed. Um, that um, the, the city of Auburn can do its best, but in the same way that the city of Auburn has incredibly strict standards within its watershed now, it didn't really matter all that much, because no one in the upper watershed had it. And so it's the kind of thing where John and his staff, I hear what you're saying, you want to see the city staff do that? We can't direct city staff, what we need to do is ask city staff to collaborate with Auburn Water District and the Lake Auburn Watership Protection Commission, because A W D and LawPAC are quite literally the only two entities that can have the impact that we need to have on the upper watershed.
I, I totally agree, I actually, and maybe my, I, maybe I only thought these words, but I think Auburn has the opportunity to be a leader here by working with those groups to build that plan. And I think that feels to me like what has to happen. You know, I mean, we, Evan is very, done a very good job of showing us the impacts of these particular switches that we can flip. And when F B gets here, we will know more about the impacts of those switches being flipped. But we need a broader regional watershed-based context with Auburn leading and collaborating with the entities that you were talking about.
Yeah, and I, I, I think this is just a, a, a good vehicle to start that discussion, you know? Even though that we're, we're pushing some things that may be somewhat, somewhat controversial, but the thing is, is that we're looking to mitigate at the same time, so I think that there's a balance there. But at the same time, we really, we really need to continue, continually ask, how are we gonna get to nine hundred? How, that should be the question everybody has, how are we gonna get to nine hundred? The signs in the communities should say, how are we getting to nine hundred?
I will say that one of my bigger fears, I'll get closer, like, one of my bigger fears is that we will go through this process, we will develop a solution that is better than what we have. Will not be the best solution, because quite frankly, there's no such thing as the best solution. Once you develop a solution, there's a better solution on the horizon. And that is my fear, that we will do what we did thirty years ago, and we will do something, and we will say, great, we've done it, and we sit on it. And I hope that as the board considers these changes, what we build into these ordinances are not just uh changes for the better compared to what we have now, but that we build in um maintenance schedules on these, on these ordinances, um, so that we are, we are reviewing them and that we are going back and looking, so we don't. So my kids, you know, so my, my daughter is eleven, she'll be forty-one in thirty years, uh, so that essentially my age, that she wouldn't be sitting here and then having to have the same discussion that I'm having and having the same, same ideas that I'm having, saying, well, if only my father had, you know, done something more proactive and not just stopped it at the curb, we wouldn't be here, so.
Well, and as I recall, we recommended that. That was, that was part of our discussion, and I think that's part of, any plan involves that sort of iterative assessment and reevaluation. Um, so I would, you know, as part of any such plan, that's definitely something I would want to see.
And I apologize, I know I've uh usurped a lot of the time here, uh, particularly because of my background, but are there, are there other kind of ideas, concepts that we want to make sure that staff hears? I want to make sure everyone gets a chance to say something if they want to say it.
The only thing I would suggest for sure is that, obviously, as a Realtor, we go to public records, and a lot of times um septic systems aren't even on file, you know? So, I mean, maybe start there, the ones that aren't on file, I'm just, as a, you know, a little idea.
Darren, do you have anything that you wanna, you want to make sure you get out to staff, or?
Um, I've been thinking of a crazy idea, and I know it may not be very popular, but it seems that at nine hundred kilograms, or yeah, of phosphorus per year, that's the max, and we're already over that. Why are we scared of a filtration system? We, we talked about this filtration waiver. I mean, I know we said it costs millions of dollars, are we talking two million, three hundred million? And uh, do we know, here, just hear me out, and before we throw a number on what that filtration system costs, have we thought about what kind of tax revenue we could collect from building homes around the lake? Just a thought, I knew it wouldn't be popular.
So, and one comment on this, I think the F B report actually has that conversation, and they, the, the one about tax revenue, and they conclude, given existing densities, that the tax revenue would not come close to offsetting the cost of a filtration system.
Okay.
So, now, having said that, though, look, it's always important, play devil's advocate, uh, I myself would rather either maintain the filtration waiver, or, and I will go on public record now, and again, now I will not be the, the, the popular one.
I can take it.
If, if we cannot maintain our filtration waiver, I would actually maintain that we should utilize our uh shallow well systems that we investigated, um, because those don't require filtration, and it's at a cost of something like uh nine million dollars to build, to build out versus the, the filtration uh plant. But Matt's right, uh, but that included all stakeholders. It was a net positive for the city of Auburn, a net negative for the city of Lewiston, and so overall, considered a, a generally, and there was no net positive for the stakeholders. Um, I don't think that we should leave anyone in the lurch, um, but I think that it is incredibly important that people not be afraid to ask questions, regardless of how unpopular they might be. Like, that's, I just want to say that, Darren, like, there's nothing wrong with asking those questions.
Um, if there's, if there's something I could add here, um, I speak with a lot of people when, in the, in the community, or people who are very involved in water quality research, especially as a student. Um, and I, the last I heard was the, the estimate for the cost of the filtration plant was actually done many years ago. So whatever I heard, forty-five million dollars, that's, that's under what it would actually be, because that was done way in the past, so whatever it would be now with inflation, everything else would be much more expensive than that.
The, so to, to add clarity, uh, being on LawPAC, I think the last time I heard a number, it was somewhere in the hundred-million-dollar range.
Um, yep, and to, to keep going, um, it's important to consider the, the social costs of, of what would happen if you put in a filtration plant. So not only are people's water bills gonna go up, but there, there are tons of low-income people in Lewiston and Auburn who really can't stretch that money, uh, if you think about it. So if someone has to pay an extra a hundred or two hundred dollars for water, they might have to skimp on food for that month. Um, so that's something that's really important to consider, um, because there's tons of people in Lewiston and Auburn who, that's really important to them. Um, and then I'd also like to ask, um, are there plans for the filtration plant? And where would it go? Um, and is that drawn up? Because unless there's a plan that's ready, um, it's impossible to tell what would happen if, if the worst-case scenario were to happen with the lake.
So, so the A W D trustees have charged their staff with doing a shovel-ready proposal for a filtration plant, with the assumption that um, uh, the, the majority of the A W trustees are sort of of the opinion right now that it's inevitable. Um, so they have, they have asked for that number, so that's a number that we could possibly have sooner than later.
I have another question. So I didn't really grow up here, I moved here when I was sixteen, and I remember moving to Auburn, and I, everybody was like, oh, there's Lake Auburn, and I was like, oh, and they're like, that's our drinking water. And I was like, really? I was like, then why are there boats in there? Like, why are there all of these other motorized things inside this water where we are supposed to be drinking it? Like, I grew up with reservoirs and, you know, things like that, and there was, you couldn't touch that water. It was like highly illegal. And so I don't under, like, so why can we allow all of these other things to go into the water? But.
I think what we're hearing from comments is that at some point, if we're gonna continue to workshop this, we're gonna want someone from A W D here who can answer questions like, uh, like, like we've got here, that we can answer questions like we're having over here.
Um, so I do know that the, one of, one of the reasons people are allowed to boat on the lake is because gas or oil will float and will actually evaporate and burn off. So the intake is, is located many meters deep in the water, and so the, anything that would be there is floating, it's not gonna be taken in, and it actually evaporates.
Right, so, so those are volatile, so they're going to, they're going to evaporate. Whereas, and people always ask, so why can you put a boat but not swim? And if you put a boat in, you've got some gasoline, and if you ever used a two-cycle, a little old two-cycle engine, you know you're dropping some, some gas and oil in the lake every time you're using it out there. Um, but uh, those are volatile chemicals, and ostensibly, A, they're lighter than water, so they're gonna float, and then uh because they're volatile chemicals, they're going to dissipate into the atmosphere. But if you were swimming in the lake, you're depositing biologicals, and those biologicals are actually heavier than water, and they're, you're talking about larger um organic molecules, and those, those tend to uh either be uh suspended in the water column or sink towards the bottom. Um, of course, the bottom being, we, we don't draw directly from the bottom of the lake, actually. We don't draw from the deepest point, but we do draw from the bottom, and so um, that's the concern with that, which is also uh part of the reason why we have a, a biological control plan out there for um waterfowl as well, because as you can imagine, they're dropping all kinds of biological particulates in the lake all the time, so, yeah. But to, to, to help you answer that question, Evan, I feel like the Evans gotta stick together with like.
We do.
Thank you.
Uh, is this a, a workshop, again, open for public comment? Cause I think we have people here that would like to share.
Traditionally, workshops are not open for public comment. Um, someone actually asked me, uh, the watershed manager asked me, Erica, said, you know, should I come down or should I watch? And I said, well, you can watch from home, but I said, I don't know. I actually named you, I said, Brian, Brian likes the idea of public comment. He might make a motion to entertain public comment during a workshop. So Brian, to answer your question, is a workshop, but there's nothing that stops you from making a motion? There's nothing, this is a workshop, and generally, we don't allow public comment, but there's nothing that prevents you, as a member of the planning board, who wants to hear from the public, from um, um, asking either formally by motion or through a, through me as an informal straw poll, to see if we want to hear from people.
I, I would welcome, uh, I would, I would like us to welcome the public to speak. There are people here that.
I would know that the, the public comment is also the next section on the agenda.
So do we want to, do we want to say that what we would entertain is, when we get to item eight? I mean, item seven, that we would ask people to talk about this workshop?
No, I'd like, I'd like to include it with this particular agenda item specifically.
So there's a question, uh, there's no motion, I'll, I'll take the liberty of asking, is there an objection to hearing from the public? All right, since there is no objection, I'll exercise my authority as chair to say that we would like to hear from the public. Uh, I am gonna ask, uh, are we okay with utilizing the same rules as we utilize for a public hearing? To utilize, say, a, a five-minute time period, asking that people utilize that, give their name and address? Okay, no checks us that. So, the board would like to hear from you, you've got five minutes.
Adam Lee, eighty-seven Western Prom. Thank you, Evan, for an incredibly cogent and substantive presentation, I appreciate that. I, I hope that that's gonna be made available to the public. I didn't see it in the agenda, but I would assume it's gonna be available on the website, right?
Yeah, so um, it's currently on the, on the website, sorry, I.
Yeah, I paused time, girl.
Okay, cool.
I didn't assume my questions were gonna be answered now, but.
Yeah, so um, it is available, if you go to the, if you go to the planning board meeting section and then go to agenda, there's a, like, the agenda section under this planning board.
I didn't see it in that agenda section.
Okay, um, we can also.
It, maybe I might have missed it.
It's right at the bottom, it's, it's the last item, and it says story map.
Cool, thank you. Um, second question was, if we could get some examples of where in the city of Auburn L D C R is presently applied, that would be very useful, I think, for our understanding of what that zone is like. Uh, um, I think, and this last part isn't questions, it's sort of comments that hopefully doesn't deteriorate into a rant, but I feel like we keep on coming back with many of these lake issues, like uh the septic system changes, the L D C R, I think is, these are great ideas, these are things that I think need to be implemented generally. I don't think there's much disagreement from anyone in the public about these. The problem we're seeing, though, is that they're coming out one at a time, um, which creates some skepticism, I think, on the part of the public as to why they are coming out one at a time, and each time they come out, we're told, and very creatively and effectively told tonight, that they are in and of themselves insufficient as a means of controlling phosphorus. In fact, as many of the members noted tonight, any additional building in this area is going to create increased phosphorus, when we need to be decreasing the phosphorus. And so I think we all know that we need a comprehensive plan that involves things like talking to other people, other municipalities outside of the watershed, perhaps pursuing litigation strategies with regards to those people, perhaps pursuing state law changes uh with regards to those other municipalities. We know that those are things that need to occur, we know we need to decrease. We know we need to decrease phosphorus. We know we need to not add any additional phosphorus. It seems like there's a very effective solution within Title Thirty-A, which is a moratorium on further development, so as to create the changes that we need. It's precisely the reason the statute exists. It's precisely the reason that we need to have an effective stop on development in the zone and figure out the comprehensive slate of solutions we can effectively enact, so as to decrease the phosphorus load, not just sort of stem the tub. So, again, you guys are looking at some effective solutions. I know that you're not the ones to enact the moratorium, so please don't take this as a criticism of your process. Because I think you're doing it effectively. You're dealing with these small issues that we can deal with at the planning board level. But in actuality, we need to have that comprehensive discussion that I think staff is talking about, certainly the community is talking about. I think we all need to be talking about it. So, thank you.
Thanks, anyone else?
My name is Pam Russo, seven forty-five West Auburn Road. I think I'm going to give, I can't see that far.
Mr. Finnegan.
Yes, Mr. Finnegan. The same answer when it was asked, when the, the presentation was made for the water study, and he said, "Well, why don't we just put in a septic filtration system?" And the answer is, "Because that doesn't help the lake." So, you can put in a filtration system, that's great, but you're not helping the lake. And that really is, I think, important. I'm just gonna throw out, if it's seventy-five percent for trees in the interim, why don't we make it more? I know the water district does cut down trees, so maybe we can increase the, the number of trees. And of course, that takes out carbon dioxide in the air when they're growing particularly. Another thought is that Lopec, we do have connections with the other cities. Because on Lopec, the other cities are represented, so maybe we can use light, utilize them better. So, the last, one of the last things is, is that we've talked only about Lake Auburn. Every single watershed is important. You look at all the lakes throughout the country and in the United States, that when you have development and you are lax on your laws, that lake becomes endangered. Taylor Pond is one of them. The Batus is one of them. There's a lot of them. So, I encourage the planning board to expand that. And I know there's a lot of development on Taylor Pond. But when you look at the comprehensive plan, they want sixteen units per acre in the Taylor Pond watershed. It's purple. I'm becoming to hate purple. So, anyway, I just wanted to throw those out. And you talked about a buffer. It would be really interesting. I do live in the watershed. I would like to be able to, what do I have to do to put in a buffer system for the phosphorus? Because I think a lot of us would certainly do our best to do that. So, maybe it's not just on septic systems and new septic systems, but we could do that, you know, because we love the lake.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Susan Brown at one fifty-two Dillingham Hill. So, a couple of things. So, the seventy-five percent of forested that we currently have, there is a, a lot. It's, it's probably part of a bigger area, right on Maple Hill, which is in, in the watershed. It's across from the llama farm. It's dead. So, I don't know if that's, that's gonna have to be raised. I'm pretty sure if it doesn't end up burning down. But there is a whole lot of dead trees there, so I think it's even less than seventy-five percent. And there's a lot of, I mean, we've had a lot of the brown tail and the, the other moth that's like the brown tail, the tent caterpillar. So, anyway, just, that's just a little point. I find myself so frustrated about this whole sewer thing, because we've talked and we've talked and we've talked. And we've talked about the upper sheds and Turner and all those areas. And I guess, in my brain, where I thought we were like moving along a little bit with this. I thought, you know, maybe I want things to happen faster than they do. But are, are we not having those conversations? You're Lopec, right, Mr. Seer?
Yes.
Are we not conversing with them about what, what they're doing up there? Are we not already touching on these subjects? I would really hope we are.
So, I paused your time, so I can answer your question. I know it's not orthodox and this is a workshop, we're already going off. And you asked a specific question, not pertaining to planning board, so in deference to that, I'll, I'll stop right there and answer. To answer your question, Lopec has representatives from those communities. Lopec is the enforcement, is essentially, you can think of the enforcement agency for the ordinances and policies created by Auburn Water District. So, Lopec doesn't create them.
Okay, so Auburn Water District, we need them.
They help them force them, yep. And Auburn Water District traditionally has left management of the watershed up to the city of Auburn within the city limits of Auburn with regard to land use. And they have focused primarily on policies and ordinances with regard to the surface water. So, there's sort of that partnership with Auburn kind of taking over the land piece, AW taking, taking over the water piece. And to answer your question, I don't know why they have never sort of worked harder with the upper watershed. But I can answer the question as to why it would be difficult currently. And part of the reason that it's currently difficult to work with the upper watershed is that we do have some, AWD actually doesn't have any septic ordinances. So, if they were to adopt the ordinance, they would have to, like, they would have to adopt a new ordinance and then push that out into the upper watershed.
So, when, when does that happen? Well, I'll go to, I'm gonna go to the next meeting.
Okay, so, so I apologize, so I hope that you are understanding my answer, that it's, A, complicated, and B, it's something that can happen, and C, that there's not much we could do about it. And also, finally, that it's made more difficult by the fact that the only ordinances AWD has to look to are actually very outdated, so I apologize.
I know, I know, since the, the FB report, which I've, I've gone to those, I've read that thing, I don't know how many times. In my opinion, they strongly say not to, not to do. And I know you would like to see a little building. I, I really think from what we're told by Evan and what we were told by FB, it seems like any building, especially now that we're at eleven hundred, when we're supposed to be at nine hundred, that our forestry is at seventy-five, but it may not really be at seventy-five. I really wonder if it's really at seventy-five. Okay, so that's one of my issues. My second thing that I, I find so frustrating is at the last planning board meeting, I watched it. This habit of mine of these meetings is really getting something. But I find it so frustrating to see how many places that we're, we're approving, our boards are approving, building in watersheds. I know this, this Brickyard was huge. Brickyard, there was concerns about the safe handling company and the chemical waste possibilities. There was the company that has, you know, cars and trucks going in and out. There was the fact that the egress from there is, there's only one egress. And we're gonna put, how, I forget how many buildings in there. Aesthetically, it doesn't seem to be as big a deal as what the Court Street thing happened. And I know you've been very involved in the Court Street project. I mean, to say that...
What, me?
Well, the board. You approved it and I know you've had some things to do with that. I know you all have things to do with that. But that Court Street project, I don't know how is, I know many of you are real estate people, but not all of you.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause time though. But like, to be fair, like, no one on this board is involved in the Court Street project right now.
Okay, okay, all right, enough. But what I'm gonna say is, about it, I don't know how anybody with a straight face can look at what's going on up there and think that that is not going to affect the property values for Pinnacle and across the way. And I, I've lived in those. I've lived in those when I was young, first graduated. I lived in those. My daughters lived in those. Everybody's lived in apartments such as this. How, I mean, I've said this before here, how many of those buildings are we gonna build? We also need, and I've said it here, triplexes and duplexes and places where people can have ownership as well as renting possibilities. And I, I just, I'm, I'm really concerned that we're, we're not listening to people. We're not listening to what certain safety concerns are, both involving the lake, involving the environment surrounding, you know, again, the chemical deal at, at Brickyard, the, the Crystal Springs water. I just feel like, between the board, the council, and yourselves, I just feel like people are talking and writing and, and you're, I know nobody's happy about petitioning, but people need to be heard. People are attending your meetings, people are on television watching, because we care. I've lived in Auburn twenty-eight years. I didn't grow up in Auburn. But I, and, and when you've been here twenty-eight years, you feel like it's your community. And we do need to build more housing and people should be able to live where they want to live. Anyway, I think there do need to be zoning rec, there do need to be zoning rules. I know some people have proposed no zoning anywhere.
So, so you know, you've got about maybe like fifteen seconds.
Seconds, I can wrap it up. I know I get going. But I, I, I think there does have to be some zoning. But I think whether you're blue, purple, green, black, white, Catholic, Jewish, Muslim, you should be able to live anywhere you want. I think everyone should have a roof over their head. And I think that I would really just feel like somebody's listening a little bit to the people.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, I, I let that one kind of go off. Did you want to talk specifically about the watershed or did you want to talk about, okay?
My name is Bruce Ryu, eighty-five Mary Carroll Street in Auburn. And a couple of things surprised me, Mr. Chairman, when you said that there's a huge number of homes being built in the watershed right now. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, in the upper towns, it's...
Oh, in the other towns.
Yeah, with, so, I'll pause your time, so that I'm not taking your time.
But it, it's okay, I, I just, I know in our watershed...
It is our watershed. Again, it's our watershed. It drains directly into our lake and they do not have the same restrictions that we have at all. And I think it's something like eighty-five percent of the development within the Lake Auburn watershed has happened outside of the city limits of Auburn, but has affected the, the Auburn.
But I, I would imagine that new homes going up in those areas have modern plumbing codes. I would imagine. You know, they all, they all have, they all have to meet code, so they would have...
Yeah, but what's, I mean, what's code? Our, I, I paused your time again. Our code is a night, is a, is a standard from nineteen ninety-two, so...
Well, we have a thirty-six-inch rule, all right? And so, that is the code that was established and it was established to limit development. And now, there's a new septic, new way of doing septic that is a better system. I don't disagree with that. So, I had a suggestion. Would it be possible to change our plumbing code, our septic code, and keep the thirty-six-inch rule in? So, that people that own land in the watershed right now, if they want to sell a lot, they have to meet the thirty-six-inch rule that has been a limiting factor for all development for many, many, many years. And if they pass the thirty-six-inch rule and somebody's gonna build a house, then they have to put in a septic system that is part of our plumbing code, which is the mounded system. And it is the best system that's out there. If you're gonna change your, if, if your septic system fails in an existing house, the plumber, plumbing inspector's gonna go there. You have to put in the new septic code that the city of Auburn has. But yet, for development, and this is just an idea that I just came up with, for development, for selling your land, keep the thirty-six-inch rule that we have now. And so, it limits development. It, it also makes the new plumbing code, you know, the, the latest and the greatest. And it was just an idea. Now, the other, the other comment I have, and I'm only gonna be another minute, is that, you know, you, you seem to think that we ought to get together with the Auburn Water District. I was a trustee for over twenty years. I was also charter member of the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission. So, been there, done that, and, and I understand most of what is being said here today. But if you're gonna get together with the water district and, and the watershed protection commission and the city council and the planning board, I think it's wonderful. But a lot of those people that have been put on those boards now, especially the water district, four of them own land in the watershed. And so, either they have to recuse themselves when they're voting or, you, you know, they're, they're making decisions here that could line their pockets. And it's a little tough to make a, an unbiased decision when you have a bias going into it. So, I would just caution, any kind of organization that you're gonna put together, make sure that there are people that are objective about it.
Yeah, I understand that. But suppose, do you have anything more that you would like us to, to hear about as a point? All right, thanks. Anyone else? Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. I'll move on to item seven, which is public comment. Might as well roll along. Is there anyone, unless there's anyone from the board that wanted to add additional comment for a workshop?
I guess I just have a question. So, when we get FB and environmental information, I hope that will be another workshop, because...
Yes, that's the plan.
Rather than a, a public hearing. Because I think we need to talk that through and we need to hear if, I think I would love to hear something about a sort of grander scheme that the city wants to pursue.
Yeah, so, sorry.
That zoning changes would be a part.
Yep. Well, I think that's good. I'm gonna, I'm gonna default back to like the, the idea like, I would hate to see us not do the best we can now, though, because we don't feel like we do the best that we could have done in a different scenario.
I agree one hundred percent. I just think it would be great to see...
Yeah, no, I agree.
The context.
Hey, seeing all the, the more information we get, the better, right? I mean, yeah. Other, other comments or anything before I move on from the workshop?
Yes, just one thing. There's another forum tomorrow night, correct? Tomorrow's at Fairview School?
Yes, and it is over zoning, but it is not over zoning specific to the watershed. In fact, there was a meeting tonight. And for those of you that chose to attend here, know that tomorrow night is supposed to be the exact same presentation. I've been told by Mr. Levec, he's the one giving it. And it's specific to some of the changes with regard to four-point-two and four-point-two-B and, but not the watershed.
I think this is a concerted effort to hear more citizens. You know, sometimes the vehicle that we have just isn't, doesn't work to be, to be heard more often. But that it doesn't mean that citizens aren't heard. We have to have a forum where, you know, walking in, we have to realize that we might have to agree to disagree. But that doesn't mean you weren't listened to. I think it's a significant difference, and it comes up quite frequently, is that you didn't listen to us. And, and I don't, I don't think that's always the case. We just see things differently.
Yeah, I, I think what's difficult sometimes is that people, let me take this back, because that's about to sound negative. And you know what? I'm not trying to be negative. I think that as a city, sometimes we don't do a great job helping people understand what everybody's role is. Like, the idea that, like, the planning board's role is quite literally to be, when it comes to some of the projects that people saw earlier, a citizen's check to make sure that i's are dotted, t's are crossed, that there's some level of citizen input with regard to site plan. But that oftentimes, our role is not to decide whether or not a project is great or not, it's to decide whether or not a project conforms to specific rules or not, right? And that, that can be confusing, particularly when we look at certain types of changes, because again, we're looking at it in a similar metric. We've been asked to look at a set of metrics and weigh it against, does it match with the comp plan? Does it meet specific criteria? Does it attain a specific goal? And our, our job isn't actually to say whether or not we think it's the best thing since the last bird or not. That's a political job and that falls on the council. So, I agree one hundred percent. I think we could do a, a better job of getting public input, but also... I think we could do a, a better job of getting public input, but also helping the public understand who they give their input to, to effect specific changes. Having said that, I'll assume there's no more discussion on the workshop. Is there anyone from the public that didn't speak that would like to speak during our regular public comment section? Sorry, I'm looking up. I see Rosemary, you've been really, thank you for sitting through this whole meeting, actually. We could have asked you lots of questions. We, we didn't. All right, so on to item eight, miscellaneous upcoming, upcoming items for August. Public hearing, changing rural residential to LDCR in the Lake Auburn watershed. So that might be coming in August. I would assume if it happens as a public hearing, at the very, very minimum, we get the FB environmental and it doesn't occur during the public hearing? And asked when we've had deadlines sort of imposed on us, the bare minimum, like we've been at least able to have a workshop at the beginning of a meeting and then have a public hearing?
Correct.
Can we assume that like at the minimum that would happen?
So wait, is this another deadline imposed?
Not yet.
It's not. It's not a deadline imposed.
I mean, I think.
Not yet.
Yeah, right. Well, I would just go on record as saying, I think it would be better to sequence these August and September and hear from FB in August as a workshop and have the public hearing in September. But that's just me.
So, this is kind of, this is kind of tentative. We are waiting on the FB report, so we've, we're just kind of waiting at this point. So we keep kind of pushing it back in a month or two, but it very well could be like September or October. And I want to add, just as a comment, that in terms of the second item, change Court Street area from T-4.2 to T-4.2B. Just so people know that the, that city council will have their first reading of T-4.2B on July 18th as forwarded by planning board. And they'll have their second reading of T-4.2B maybe August 1st. And they would also plan on maybe having that the same, the same day, having the reading, the first reading of applying that to Court Street at city council. And I do not believe they would be sending that back to us.
I think, yeah, I, yeah, I know we didn't have a pre-meeting. I was wondering about that because I thought, I don't know, no obligation to send it back to us.
Yeah.
It would not be like them to do that, so.
Yeah, the short answer is no. It's not going back to the board.
Yeah. So a few changes actually then sent on this miscellaneous part, upcoming items for August, since this was sent out. We do have, for August, for projects, we have right now a, a doggy daycare coming through, maybe for us to review. We have, what else do we have? Oh, and we have a warehouse.
Lamy Wellahan.
Lamy Wellahan. As well as like maybe some other zoning ordinances, but those are the two projects. And we will get that, we are working on getting that set up.
And so, just another miscellaneous thing, so I'm, I'm a planner and I, I'm sure you all have thought about this before, but we're likely going to have a conflict with November, is that true?
Yep, we've already changed that date. It's, I think it's, we moved it like a week earlier because of the election. It's, no, it is.
But, well, it's November 1st is a Tuesday and then the 8th is another Tuesday, so.
Oh, oh, sorry, we moved it back a week. It'll be the 15th, I think.
15th.
Yeah, 15th is the date.
All right, I think we're going to run into some, I could tell. I was saying like, FB Environmental can come back, that's okay with me. Like, as long as they don't come back with something that's, says this is horribly wrong, I'm ready to roll. Like, I would rather do something that's positive now, but I'm saying we're going to run into issues, I think, as a board collectively, like deciding on our processes as we move forward, but we will do that when we get to it. All right. Any items for members of the board, miscellaneous questions, anything they want to bring up? No? I guess I'll move on to item nine, adjournment. Is there a motion?
There are.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, meeting is adjourned.